Okay, it is three fifty-nine. I will now call on September third, I'll call to order this regular Grand County Commission meeting. Present, we have Commissioners Kevin Walker, Evan Clapper, Bill Winfield, Tricia Dean, Mike McCurdy, and myself, Jacques Hadler. We also have our county clerk, Gabriel Waitak, and our county Associate County Administrator Quinn Hall. All rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the Republic for which it stands, why they send their God or God in the physical political and justice of our home.
Thank you. As usual, we'll start a meeting today with the Citizens to Be Heard session. I will, if you're in the chambers, I'll please raise your hand and I'll acknowledge you and you may come forward to make your statement. Please state your name when you come to the table. I'll go between folks in the chambers and online and we'll also have another Citizens to Be Heard meeting at six o'clock and I'll go to the back to Helena, if you want to come forward.
Good afternoon, everyone. My name's Helena Roy and I'm one of the property owners down on West Center Street. And in case you don't remember me, I was in here two weeks ago prompted by the assessed values of my property down on West Center Street. Asking for you to please acknowledge the fact that we are in a flood zone. And as if Mother Nature wanted to help improve my point, on August twenty-third, we had the biggest flood yet down there. And it is heartbreaking. If you have been down there. If you're familiar with Team Rubicon, the volunteer group, the National Volunteer Group, has come down and scouted it and said that unfortunately, it is outside of the scope of their work to help clean up down there. It looks like a disaster zone. So we are in a flood zone. And in regards to the assessed values comparing us with other areas here in town, it's something that I discussed with the representative of the Board of Equalization, which I believe is you guys, and he said that he will make a recommendation potentially looking into the code for disaster, natural disaster tax payment. And as much as I would appreciate that, I think it's not really what I see is happening down there. It's not necessarily a natural disaster anymore. It's not necessarily a flood issue that we're dealing with down there. We're dealing with a drainage issue. And then it's county and citywide. And we are just at the lowest end, so we're just going to get hit with it every time. And I think the truth why Team Rubicon probably said that it's outside of the scope of their work, it's not necessarily that they cannot do it, but that they realize that they might clean it up within the next four weeks and then the next flood is going to happen. And it's going to look exactly like that. So I really do believe that until the larger issue is addressed, which will most likely be a multi-year project, because I'm pretty sure that the state needs to really come in and help if we're looking at the costs of any projects that could help. That's not going to happen overnight. So in the meantime, I would again really apply the word to acknowledge the location of properties down there. And then so far, we got lucky. I mean, I had a moment where I thought I needed to climb on my group. I mean, it's an experience I've just never really thought I would have. I don't wish it on anybody. And everybody is saying, you know, every property owner needs to take care of their own property and I'm totally aware of that and I'm, you know, already planning and thinking of what I can do to just buy a little bit of flood mitigation. It is however, beyond just sandbagging. And I would really like for you guys to acknowledge that and potentially just be really upfront with everybody down there and just say the reason why certain things are not happening is because everybody knows that cleaning up is not necessarily a solution for now. It's like putting a Band-Aid on and it's a waste of money. I've been watching the city down there, but that's parking lot on One Hundred West. And moving air, I mean, moving sand around, sand around after each flood doesn't do anything. It doesn't do anything. So that is really a waste of time and energy and I totally acknowledge that. I would however, really ask you or want to ask you, I am asking you to please acknowledge that when it comes to assessing values down there, because right now, anything helps that potentially have extra to just build little walls and all kinds of little things. But overall, really, I ask you to be honest with the citizens. And not pretend that they will be funding by any of that when there really isn't. I would potentially make a decision that why waste any money on cleanup efforts when we know that this is going to happen again in the next year? Twenty twenty-three was a twenty twenty-two, we had the last flood happening on October sixth. So we're not out of the monsoon season yet theoretically. And yeah, I get it that this isn't an easy thing. Apparently, it has been an ongoing thing in the county and in the city for many, many decades. But it is a drainage issue. I'd please acknowledge that. Thank you.
Thank you, Helena. Next speaker? Raise your hand, please. No? Yes, sir.
Living hasn't deepened way more than we should expect, but maybe it will be like this in the future as well. That's not what I came to talk about. Concerned about the transient room tax and things I've been reading in the paper, it seems to be like the majority of our county commission is working with the auditor going with their local person. To resolve some of the issues, some of the issues seem pretty light or perhaps things being off by about two percent or something like that. That's easy. I take that often. The usual thing that happened. Here, I really appreciate the effort you put in, especially when you hear things coming out of state legislators. Kay and Raver are clearly political judgments. Judgments based on sound accounting. It's just, it's kind of bad for us to be faced with this. I just like the same thing.
Thank you. Anyone else in the audience here who has come to make a comment for Citizens to Be Heard? Is there anyone on Zoom? See any hands raised? Good. Last call for the audience? In Zoom? All right. Thank you. Yes, Pete? Absolutely, yeah.
So this is mostly rhetorical question, but as far as I can tell, I went out next to Rotary Park to do some noise measurements. Of the four or five UTVs, the past two of them were probably on the borderline if they hadn't gone beyond the decibel level for the noise ordinance. So this rhetorical question. Has anyone, either city or county, issued a noise ordinance violation after we spent, I mean, it's been more than three years since you passed the revised noise ordinance with testimony from Les Blomberg from Vermont Noise Pollution clearinghouse specifically worded the noise ordinance to address motor vehicle misuse. So I don't expect an answer. I think I know what the answer is, but I encourage, I would love to see some enforcement on noise ordinance violations. Thank you.
Thanks, Pete. Anyone else here to make a comment? All right, we will move on. Thank you all. Our next item is presentations and today we have the Chamber of Commerce here to make a presentation, so I would welcome Cassie Oliver. Thanks for being here.
So I, in the last county commission meeting, there were some questions about our application for the the rural county grant and also for the reporting from the previous year's rural county grant. And I sent information, I guess I just came to answer any questions that you all might have after receiving the information. Is there?
Yeah, thanks. Thanks so much for sending that along, Cassie. I think that definitely helped clarify things in my mind, but I would open up the floor to other commissioners. Anyone have a question for Cassie regarding the latest? Kevin?
Um, yeah, I guess thanks for sending the information. I'm still a little bit confused about what the total amount of the request, the new request is.
Yes. So it's sixty-three thousand five hundred dollars, which was the amount that was approved by the Economic Development, the Economic Opportunity Board. And I know that some of the questions about that were the other, there were three sheets on that, on that page and unfortunately, when I sent it, because we were doing it pretty quick, pretty quick pace, I only sent the first sheet. But a lot of that was to help with the web design, because I am not still that web designer. So if you asked me to do that, it would be a very poor turnout indeed, but so a lot of that is that and to keep it going and keep it functional and make sure that this doesn't become a project that we spend money on and then nothing happens with. So I want to make sure that we keep, have the upkeep on that.
Great, thank you. Any other members of the commission like to query Cassie about anything?
If you could elaborate on the information that you did send in, I mean, I'm looking at last year's proposed budget breakdown, quarterly trainings, monthly education, a business summit, different dollar amounts that fall into those. Did you meet those meetings and trainings that you had planned? I guess that's what I'm looking for. Is, and I'm one of the ones that requested some more information. I believe Commissioner Dean was the other one. But I'm just curious because there are line items and if we're going to, as a commission and a county, give out grants, it would be nice to have somebody come in and volunteer these rather than ask for them to show that you've met what you've said that you were going to do with that money. And I realize there's been some change, so it's not all you and I'm not pointing fingers at anybody. But we are talking about money that's taxpayers' dollars here and I want to make sure that we are meeting the expectations of the taxpayers who have questions about this. And so if you could elaborate on those, the quarterly trainings and the monthly education, I'm clueless what that is. I do understand the business summit because I attended it and saw some of what went on there. So if you could just help me out a little bit there.
Of course, yeah. No, I'm happy to. I am equally concerned about the way the tax money is spent as a taxpayer myself. So I really want to make sure that that is spent wisely and well. The quarterly trainings, when I came on, had not been done yet. So that is why they, we did one in, I believe, May. Yes, May. And then I have three more scheduled for the remainder of the year. So from my understanding, the funds were received in January of this year with the intention of being spent throughout the whole twenty twenty-four year. So not all of that has been spent yet. It is sitting in our bank account with it, with it being earmarked. When speaking to the state, specifically Colette Cox, she assured me that as long as we had it earmarked, that that was what was required by the state and what was needed. So the quarterly trainings are based off of the business needs in the community. Through my, just my one-on-one meetings with the local business owners, a lot of the concern that we have is this, the invariably of the economy and the the nature of living in a tourist community. So the next one is going to be on basically how to ignite your business, like better marketing skills, how to help your employees produce better to make sure that you're using efficient use of what you have. And then our one in November is going to be strategic planning. One where we have people that, or a person who is an educator who does strategic planning for a living and he is going to help people build a plan. So your business is not reactive but proactive. I think that that's really important in our community to make sure that businesses have a plan, knowing what's going to happen, that we're going to have ups and we're going to have downs. And then the next one is going to be on hotel revenue management. So we can help our hotels just do a better job of managing what they have, not even a better job, just give them some information and some education on some other ways to manage their hotel revenue. I am not an expert on hotel revenues. I've been talking to people about that, on how that goes and I want to keep doing that and hoping to get that one done in December. The quarterly trainings are done by Barry Phillips. It was contractually done before I got on and it was, he does an online monthly training that anyone in the county can go to the chamber website, sign up for, for free. He talks about leadership, he talks about marketing. He did a social media quarterly training for us. He also does a Q and A every month, so you can go on and ask him questions. He is also a business expert. Going forward, if I were asked, I would probably not do a contract with someone. I don't think it's flexible enough for the needs of our community. And I think we have a lot of people within our community that understand it better and we could utilize those people in a lot better way. That's how I, with that, I, I feel like that probably wasn't the best decision that we made, but it was an easy way to do it. So I understand why it was made.
Well, I definitely appreciate all of the update. I do have one last question and that's centered around the business summit. On my bet, multiple constituents who are extremely concerned that maybe this Chamber of Commerce money was paying for the pre-party to the business summit at the Red Earth venue. And so I'm curious about that and if you feel that, if in fact you did use that money towards that, if that was appropriate.
We did, yeah. We did use the money for that. That was for, it was for our sponsors and our speakers. It was a thank you. The board members were also, some of the board members were also there. I think that part of the chamber's purpose or like job and role is to make sure that there's networking and that people have the opportunity to meet each other. It's a big part of what we do. So that was used for that specifically. It was five thousand dollars that was used for that.
Well, I might agree that it is the chamber's responsibility there, but I'm not positive that it's the taxpayers' responsibility and that was the concern that was raised. And I would think moving forward that it might be better to be a little more transparent and less generous, I guess, maybe be the word to that.
I didn't, I was there.
There were plenty of businesses, I think, that helped underwrite that event that could have also helped underwrite, underwrite the dinner, I guess, as part of the concern of the constituents.
So the total, I mean, we haven't actually allocated, because we did get a lot of sponsorships and we could use, make sure the funds for the sponsorships went to the dinner. That's not a problem at all. But it's because we raised more money. We used thirty thousand of this for the summit, but we also earned a little bit of money and we used, we actually had six thousand dollars left over. So that way, we can use that five thousand from those sponsorships and that's not a problem.
I just think the perception is important.
Yeah, no, perception is very important. And I hope that there, there wasn't any attempt to not be transparent. So, okay.
I don't think that anybody's suggesting that. It's just the questions are there.
Yeah, I understand.
That's all I have.
Thank you, Cassie. Did you have anything you wanted to add, Tricia? Okay. Any other questions or comments for Cassie? Mike?
That list on marketing, that twenty thousand. Within the cover letter also, it says there are a multitude of resources available to our local businesses, yet many are unaware of their existence. That marketing's pointed towards acquiring new businesses with the chamber.
Oh, you mean to get people to sign up for the chamber? Is that?
I was like, is part of that marketing or what is that marketing directed for?
That marketing is to let people know about the resource that we're creating, because we're creating that business hub where people have access to the resources and specifically where we can get. So let's say that you are having problems with marketing. And we know all of the marketing experts that will provide information for free. So we want to connect you up with that person. We want to be really personal, not just like you put a name on a website, cross your fingers, hope someone calls, but we call a person and we say, hey, this business of ours is struggling with X, Y, Z, and we know you can help and we connect and we follow up and we make sure they're using the resources that already exist. State has a lot, the federal, the federal government has a lot. They're just not being utilized and this marketing is solely to market that.
Just to market that.
Just to market that. It's not to market the chamber as, hey, sign up for the chamber. That's not the purpose of this.
Yeah, I didn't know if it's marketing for the chamber or marketing for.
Legitimate question. It is not. It is for this purpose.
Okay.
All right. Anything further? All right. Thank you so much for coming, Cassie, and keep up, keep up the good work at the chamber. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Okay, we have no department or agency reports today, so we will move on to our general reports and we always start that out with commission member disclosures. I would ask any members of the commission here to disclose if you have anything that needs to be disclosed about today's agenda. All right, doesn't look like it. So we will start with our general commission reports and future considerations. And I'll start at the end of the dius over there with, with Kevin.
Just checking my calendar. I think all the meetings I've had since our last meeting are going to be discussed elsewhere on the agenda.
All right, Commissioner Clapper?
The end of the month is usually typically quiet for me as well. I will also mention two weekends ago was the start, start party up at Sand Flats that Andrea mentioned when she was giving her report and that not giantly attended, but there were folks taking advantage of that. So kudos to that. Hopefully that continues to grow and be more of an event in our community. And also I, there was a meeting with EMS regarding the financing of the ambulances that Andy briefly mentioned during his presentation during our workshop. And finally, those are coming to fruition so that the financing have been waited until the ambulance are pretty much ready for pickup. And so those are coming to Canada. Some of our guys are going up there and driving those down. And then another is going to make its tour. The, the manufacturer is going to show off the ambulance. It's kind of like a showpiece and they're going to tour it around and deliver it here so that knocks a chunk of change off for it.
You said a four-wheel drive ambulance?
So it's going to say Grand County, Utah, blah, 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 make the rounds all down the west coast through the Rockies. Yeah.
That's actually awesome. Yeah. Is that one of the, is that one of the jacked up four-wheel drive ambulances that we're?
I think it is four-wheel drive, but I don't think it's the Sprinter. On the fly, shock adjustments.
All the good stuff.
It is, it is a a model vehicle. So I'll just say those guys for pulling that all together last night. And that's all I got.
All right, Commissioner Winfield?
Work for the public possibly. And we have, most of us attended the Trail to Tomorrow. We have participated in that and seems to be a lot of good stuff that came out of all the hard work from those folks. I was quite impressed with the amount of time and effort that they put into that. It's also part of a meeting regarding the USU small business, business development and ongoing efforts there to looks like adjust our contract. And I believe that some of that's still in Mr. Starks's hands, if I guess that that's kind of the point that is. Regarding that adjustment of that, if that contract can be adjusted there. But see, I was also part of a meeting that Trish and Mary put on regarding flood damage and there were a lot of people from state, federal and local level all in that meeting with lots of ideas. And I have asked, and Quinn has mentioned that we might need to ask permission of the participants, but I believe that for the general public, that meeting would be good to be on our YouTube site, not just my personal opinion, but I would think there was enough information shared and many that I don't think it's further on.
We reached out to all the participating entities to ask if they cared and I only got one response. So I don't know, tomorrow morning, maybe I'll throw it up there if they had the chance to veto it, so.
So that, there was a lot of information, a short amount of time there from a lot of different people. I also on that same day, spent about three hours with Senator Romney's deputy state director. His name was Andy Grant. And I toured her of the entire flood damage of the valley and pretty much from the very bottom of the main rivers all the way out to the upper end and showed her what a lot of our citizens and residents have been enduring. So I believe she was in the meeting a couple later. That you guys held that. I don't know if she's on a timed schedule or what, but I did show her a tour of some of these stuff. And then I was part of a raft trip below the Flaming Gorge Dam. And honestly, I was very reluctant to go, but somewhat pressured by our coach steward. What is, it's tied up to Grand County.
Uh, he's our lobbyist. Yeah, exactly.
Lobbyist. And so I did go and then actually it ended up being a very good trip. I was on the raft with James Shawcroft, who was the chairman of the board of the Cawbrow River Authority. An old rancher, goes by T. Wright. And I was a little embarrassed. I wore my ten shoes because he went on the raft trip and his cowboy boots. So good on him. But anyway, he had a wealth of information about the balance that takes place out of the Flaming Gorge reservoir and the efforts that are being made to mitigate or get rid of the invasive species and at the same time to increase the natives. So there, there's a war going on between the two and at some point in the river, that line is where they meet. And so he had a lot of information and I learned a lot about how the different water temperatures that they release helped them fight those floods. So it ended up being a very nerdy experience. And I think that was the extent of, that was. So, hopefully that.
Thank you, Bill. Trish?
Okay, so as Bill mentioned, we had the Trail to Tomorrow. We also met with Representative Curtis on that same day. That's right, just before that and a few commissioners. We talked about housing. We talked about the air service out at the airport, which I'm glad you brought that up. And I think that's about all we got to. It was short, thirty minutes and they were out of there. And we, I should go into, yes, we had an emergency meeting after the extensive flooding from, I guess that would have been the twenty-third, twenty-fourth-ish. And yeah, I think it would be great if we can get that out on YouTube so that citizens can kind of just see what was generally discussed. So I won't go into that, but I'll say that the next day or two days later, we had another meeting internally and some of the big things that came out of that is, hang on one sec, I've got to get to the right, there we go. You know, I think some of the big things is that we need to update our storm drainage plan that was from, the master plan is from two thousand and eleven. So the reality is hopefully we can get that done next year. The state is doing a kind of larger statewide flood plain analysis and we also need that information. So if we can take those two things, we can begin to build a comprehensive plan to look at drainage, right? So we need an updated engineer, engineering plan. And we need an updated kind of flood plain plan from the state to really understand like what are our lists. I think, Dan, we talked about the two thousand and eleven plan had fifty-two projects, something like that. And so the reality is, you know, if we do an updated plan, maybe there's going to be a hundred and thirty projects and then, you know, prioritize. So where do we want to put our money that it's most of, you know, doing the greatest good. And, and you're right, Helena, like it's, it's not going to be years. I mean, I think we talked, it could be fifteen years to go chunk through those, those projects. But the reality is, we have to get that on the ground and we have to start allotting money to it. Currently, we've been putting about four hundred thousand dollars a year into flood mitigation. We're talking, you know, we may have to double that. It's just, you know, we are taking actions, right? We're talking, you know, we may have to double that. It's just, you know, we are taking actions, right? But but I think we need to get the large scale picture then to start parsing out like where do we even begin, right? Instead of just randomly throwing money at projects that, you know, right now water's coming from everywhere. That's the, you know, the, the flooding that happened in my neighborhood was pretty random. You know, it hadn't been happening and then we got, my neighborhood got flooded last weekend or whenever that was, the twenty-third, twenty-fourth also, uh, because there's an old wash there. It came off of Johnson's up on top. So so I think, you know, the bit, we are trying to take the big picture and, and, and parse it out and like, where do we start attacking? The drainage issues within the valley. And so that was really lucrative. Let's see. I think that's probably it for me. We're gonna talk about planning. I went to the planning commission, but we're, we're gonna discuss all that. And so, yeah.
Thanks, Trish. Michael.
Uh, most of my stuff comes up, uh, later and I didn't really have anything outright in meeting wise, uh, come up towards the end of the month. Uh, my discussion topic leads upon pretty much half of everyone. Uh, I mean, on just, I wanted an update. We get that tonight in the discussion. Okay. So.
Great. All right. And I had, uh, so on the twenty-first, as, as everyone's aware at this point, I was asked by the state revenue and taxation committee to speak at a legislative hearing. So I traveled up to Salt Lake to speak there and that will be the, uh, topic of another discussion, uh, coming up at the end of our agenda. Um, also last week I attended the Utah State Outdoor Rec Summit in Bryce and I, that was a, that was a, that was a great event that the, um, that the state of Utah puts on. There's really good networking opportunities, really good speakers. The keynote speaker was, was great talking about um, just mental health and the outdoors was, was pretty inspiring for everybody there. Um, also there are some, some great breakouts. The one that stood out for me was, there was a breakout on, uh, conflict and collaboration with diverse user groups that I think was, I think everyone should, should, uh, should check something like that out because it was, uh, it's, it's very helpful and especially informative in, in kinda the atmosphere today. Um, and the other takeaway from that is that, is that everyone's talking about responsible messaging, like almost on every discussion and all over the, um, all, all over the meeting. That's kind of a buzzword and the state's investing heavily in that with the Forever Mighty campaign and, uh, it's, it's kind of the, the new direction that, that most people seem to be going with that. Um, and then on the, uh, thirtieth, I also attended a ribbon cutting at the Murphy Flat, uh, Apartments and I continue to be super impressed with that, uh, development. It's a great opportunity for people, um, for workforce housing that's not totally outrageously priced and a, a really good atmosphere. And just kudos to those guys for, for keeping that moving forward and doing a good job with that. Um, and that's all I have. So, uh, we will move on to.
Double dip?
Sure. Yeah, definitely have it.
Trish reminded me about the, the meeting with, um, John Curtis and uh, Stephen took some notes from that, but he, Curtis often asks for letters. So rather than just like talking about items, um, if we give them an actual letter, then he could say this is what they want. And so some of those things that came up, uh, kind of a little more about the housing was there's a couple of bills about, um, uh, using federal lands for housing. And, um, I think they're still kind of like in their, or enough infancy is the word, but they're not imminent. And so I think that, um, weighing in on some of the items that would make that palatable or what we would like to see in it to be able to support some of those bills and get behind it would be, uh, beneficial for him, but also, uh, Senator Mike Lee's driving one of the, and I think, you know, we have some direct line of contact with his office. So, uh, I haven't looked at those bills too specifically, but, um, you know, if there was carve-outs that they were only for federal employees or something like that, that, um, you know, it might be worth a future discussion to see what would be, um, nice for us to have in there. Uh, as always, just kind of a letter requesting the, the pile getting transferred directly to the county and not trickling down through all the different federal agencies. Um, and piggybacking on that, we mentioned the idea of the water rights from the Cisco site being transferred to Thompson Springs. So that could be something that we could jot a letter pretty easily. I think, I don't think that's too contentious. And then also with the airport, um, continuing, uh, Inflation Reduction Act energy credits. Um, I think those had a sunset on them. And so things where there was rebates for solar power and stuff that, uh, sending a letter that we'd like to see those continue so that we can take advantage of them. And so that was just, uh, a few more things out of that meeting that we shouldn't let fall through the cracks.
That's great. Thank you for the reminder, Evan. I think that's, uh, that's, that's super important. Yeah. All right. We'll move on to, um, elected official reports and, uh, looks like Gabe is our, uh, sole elected official here. So I would, uh, what's your first, Gabe?
Okay, uh, election is starting to warm up a little bit. Um, there's gonna be some pretty interesting public outreach that you'll see in media, uh, coming up here. Things like, uh, an I voted sticker designed by a high school student that'll be included in everyone's ballot mailing. Uh, a visit that I took to Omaha and Minneapolis to our election vendors. So a lot of, uh, interesting and and sort of in, I, I think some important information that everyone should know and that should, that, that will build everyone's confidence in, in our processes, which are really good. The general certification has been finalized by the lieutenant governor. So that means, uh, all the races as they will appear on the ballot. That's sort of been now pretty well set in stone. So we're proofing envelopes. We're gonna start to, you know, we're sending up, we're ready to send our data to the um, to our vendor that sort of creates the ballot proof itself. So, um, that's really close, you know? We're gonna be sending out the ballots now here in less than forty-five days, I think it is. And yeah, it's gonna come up quite quick. And other than that, budget season is underway too. The first budget advisory board meeting is tomorrow. That's Wednesday, ten AM. It will be, um, it will be every Wednesday at ten AM with the exception of next week, the eleventh, um, because of the UAT conference and and everyone being, a, a lot of, a lot of people being sucked into that, we decided to skip over next week. Um, so I just wanted to make sure to take a chance to put that out there that the eleventh, the BAB will not be meeting. Uh, but tomorrow we're kicking it off at ten AM and, uh, en- encourage anyone and everyone to, to tune into that, um, either live or, or in the recording and and follow along as we go through this. Thanks.
Thank you, Gabe. Um, do you know, is, uh, do you know if, if the sheriff is gonna be commenting today? Anybody?
And bef, um, I don't know actually. And I, I wanted, Stephen, did you wanna have a minute to?
Okay, great. Okay. Did you know, Quinn, if, if Jameson was gonna make a comment? Okay.
I've heard.
But he's not here. Great. And Stephen isn't here yet either. Uh, I think he's in court still. Um, all right. So then we'll move on to our commission administrator report.
Um, we're have mixed feelings that Kate Finley has accepted a job with Grand County School District. So she's moving on. We will be flying the position of special events coordinator here quickly. Um, that'll be open. We did get the RFP for the Mud Springs Trail System posted. So that's been, thank you guys for, that was six months worth of work to.
Yay, awesome.
Get that moving forward. So the RFP is out. I think the construction of the main part of the trail, once we award the RFP would probably take place next fall and that should be then ready to go for the fall of twenty-six. So other than that, I turned a bunch of the savings you guys did. So many other ones I can't even keep track of. So huge thanks to Alicia for holding down the fort because without her I'd be completely lost.
Thank both of you for all the hard work you've been doing in the absence of an administrator. Really, we very much appreciate it. We know how, how much of a burden it's been. So, thank you. Um, all right, uh, that concludes our general reports. So we will move on to our general business action items. And the first one on our agenda today is the UDOT one ninety-one quarter preservation agreement. And this one goes to, uh, Quinn and Dan Stenta, our county engineer, to present.
Dan knows so much more about this than I do.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Dan.
Um, I apologize. I don't have a lot of pretty graphics on for you, but in a nutshell, um, it has to do with, we're committing to that UDOT has identified future right-of-way needs out of the valley, starting from the south end of town all the way out to the end of the valley, San Juan County. So they're trying to create one of these agreements between Moab City, Grand County and San Juan County. And what the agreement does basically is it says we will, whenever we get a land use application that comes in, if it's within this area that they've identified as wanting more right-of-way, um, we'll direct those people to the UDOT right-of-way people. They have money to buy it. This is what the issue is. And then we also won't allow permanent structures within that. It doesn't affect us in Grand County very much at all because we already have a fairly wide right-of-way through most of um, a lot, one ninety-one for most of Grand County. There's one minor little exception by, um, the Kawaye property, um, South Gate Village entrance there. But even that, I think we're talking like five feet of what they've identified is what they want versus what's already there. So it's more of just keeping this concept of frontage road, um, going, this is to facilitate that effort on their part. Um, there's a story map that's available on UDOT's website that shows the layout of that frontage road. We've been trying to work with them. But essentially what the county is committing to with this agreement is basically saying it has land use applications come in, we will review them for possible encroachment on this future right-of-way need, which like I said, affects very few properties in Grand County. Um, and we will forward them on to the UDOT right-of-way team for potential item position.
All right. Thank you, Dan.
Any questions?
That, uh, storyboard that you mentioned, is that, um, how set is that? How dynamic is it? I guess what I'm asking is we've had some, uh, land use applications in the past where people are looking at changing, um, density zones at terms of overlays and, uh, they kind of lost momentum because of changes that they would have need to make for exiting one ninety-one. And so if, if there's interest in something like that, might they change some of those frontage road access points or?
That's a good question. Um, and some of those applications, we have tried to, the county planning staff and myself and sharing have tried to say to UDOT, well, let's let them basically put a driveway and along the alignment of the frontage and take it to the nearest county road intersection instead of forcing them to create and do access with turn lanes and A cell, D cell lanes, uh, because they're cost prohibitive on the scope of most developments. Um, you guys are probably familiar with the, the turn lane, A cell, D cell lane that went in with the new camp park down. It's not new, but expanded camp park down in San Juan County. Um, just past, uh, the Loop Road there, kind of, that was like a point two million dollar project. Um, and that's roughly what scope of a, a project to try to get a, a UDOT permit for an expanded use is. UDOT has basically said, well, we wanna get this agreement in place first before we really commit to any of that stuff. Um, hopefully, once this agreement's in place, the county's committed to doing that, they'll be a little bit more flexible with maybe looking at these properties coming in. Some of the ADOs or two or three of the ADO applications is basically stalled out because they got to a point where UDOT said you need to do a new highway improvements, scope of, you know, million to half million to a million and a half, something like that. And it basically just depends a little bit. So hopefully, um, this will help facilitate moving in that direction. Um, yeah, I guess that's all.
Yeah. I guess, I mean, I, um, we kind of ran into the step with the stoplight too, that, you know, there's kind of anticipated volume. But, you know, if we approve some of these projects, that volume might come online a lot faster. And so maybe some of those frontage roads could break ground sooner or.
I would like to see that happen. Uh, so the, the frontage roads would be, my understanding is that they would be county roads. They would be built in UDOT right-of-way existing now, but then the UDOT would turn them over to the county. UDOT doesn't have a budget to construct those roads as right now they do have some money to buy uh, right-of-ways becomes available. It's a much bigger impact on San Juan County sideline than it is on the Grand County sideline. Like I said, in, in Grand County through that whole area, we have about four hundred feet of right-of-way right now. And actually they're only looking for like two hundred and forty, uh, for, for the road with the full frontage roads and bike paths on each side and everything. So there's actually excess through much of our Grand County section. The exception of a couple of small. Um, the frontage road is more of an access control for UDOT just so that they can keep their speeds up on one ninety-one and consolidate intersections. Um, I don't know that it really is driven by how much density comes on other than the amount of traffic that that density would contribute. But I think they're pretty set on that if they build out plan.
Uh, Mike. Um, you said, uh, other versions, uh, are agreements are going with city, uh, San Juan County. Uh, what, what San Juan say about it?
I have no idea what San Juan says. Yeah. So they were basically just, I think it was a similar draft agreement. They sent it to all three entities. We had a little back and forth on, I had a little back and forth on the Grand County one, just identifying mileposts exactly where they were and a couple of language things Stephen wanted to see added to he felt like it covered the county too much. They were fire clubs, but I don't know what that status.
Okay. No, I just, I mean, you are talking, most of it's in San Juan. But I want continuity as we drive out, not just a weird wall or a weird, yeah.
Yeah. No, no, I mean, they do need to be a key player for sure. Um, one fortunate thing in San Juan is a lot of it is Silla.
Yep.
And Silla, I believe, has signed an agreement with UDOT formal otherwise that says we will give you the right-of-way that you need for this build-out plan.
Good.
So that's probably seventy-five percent of what's in San Juan County.
Yeah, the entire side.
But there are definitely some properties, um, you know, right near that cut that are pretty tight in there. Just past that cut, there's some tight properties. Right by, uh, turnout to Loop Road is, is narrow. That will be potentially.
Okay.
Bill, let's see. Bill, stand up and then Kevin.
Yeah, I just wanted to mention I was in attendance at several of those meetings and really the, seems like the focus of the two frontage roads are gonna start there at the light that we have acquired funding for at Eggie Boulevard and then proceed to the south. There might be some in the future that extends further down into Moab, but I don't believe so at this time, but.
You're correct. The initial plan goes from that light to Eggie Boulevard with, with some like, um, kind of little transition zones on the Moab City side of it. But yeah, essentially from that light to, um, South Gate Village Drive. But they do have a tentative plan to extend that out into San Juan County as well. But what's on their sort of story map, they call it right now, is from, and what the study was done first from Eggie Boulevard, just, I think it's called South Gate Village Drive, right before they're reading their or you're talking about.
Kevin?
Um, I, I move to approve the UDOT one ninety-one corridor preservation agreement.
Thank you. Second from Bill. All right, uh, motion on the table, Commissioner Walker, second from Commissioner Winfield. Any further discussion on this one? Seeing no, I'll call for a vote. All those in favor, raise your hands and that passes unanimously. Cool. Thank you, Dan. Um, on to item two, independent contractor agreement or ICA for Blake Construction LLC for new roofs on Barnes E and F for damage caused by the June twenty-one, twenty twenty-four storm. This one goes to Angie from Old Spanish Trail Arena. Is she on? There she is. All right. Welcome, Angie.
Hello.
We're, hold on, we're gonna make you big, Angie.
Okay.
There we go. Okay, go ahead, Angie.
Hello, everybody. Um, so tonight I am just bringing to you, um, an ICA agreement for a contractor, um, during one of the many storms that we've had, um, OCS has received some damage throughout a couple of the storms. Um, one of the biggest, well, I don't know if it's one of the biggest, we've had a couple of incidents happen, but one of them is, um, we lost some roofs to a couple of our barns. Um, so down on our north end, we lost the roofs to Barnes E and F. Um, we received some insurance money, um, but they don't pay all of it. They pay a depreciation. They take off a depreciation value. Um, so I am requesting, um, some funding for unbudgeted expenses and that is in the amount of eleven thousand five hundred seventy-three dollars to cover replacement. And that is in the amount of eleven thousand five hundred seventy-three dollars to cover replacement. To get the roofs put back on those barns.
Great, thank you Angie. Bill?
I move to approve the O S S request for funding for the use of unbudgeted expense in the amount of eleven thousand five hundred seventy-three dollars. To O S S end of the year general fund for the replacement roofs of Barney you know.
Thank you.
Do I need to read the rest of it as well?
Maybe just, and and also the.
And also I move to approve the independent contract agreement with Lake Construction LLC for the replacement of the roofs on Barnes. E and F caused by the June twenty-first, twenty twenty-four storm.
Great, thank you. Alright, uh motion to approve from Commissioner Winfield, second from Commissioner Walker, um Gabe.
Uh just real quick, it's it says in the agenda packet that this would be coded to the general fund, O S T capital project line, that's in font ten. Um, just as a correction to that for the record, um this expense will be budgeted out of the capital projects fund. What is that thirty-two, gosh, I can't remember now off the top of my head, it's thirty-two, thirty-four, doesn't matter. But just wanted to clarify that that that's um that that's been corrected and directed already, but I wanted to say that into the record.
Great, thanks Gabe for the clarification, anyone else? Alright, call for a vote, all those in favor of the motion, raise your hands, and that passes unanimously, thank you Angie.
Thank you.
Alright, item three, uh UDOT uh TPA cooperative agreement grant for twenty twenty-one. Non-motorized trail master plan update, and this one is uh Matty Logovitz from Active uh Transportation Trails.
I haven't seen Matt yet, okay, this is a ninety thousand dollar technical planning assistance grant award to Grand County. Does have a thirty thousand dollar match that'll be provided through the city of Moab with an ongoing interlocal agreement, so it's no cost to the county.
Yeah, and this is, is this is, I remember at the end of when we were doing doing budgeting last year, didn't this come up at the last minute? We were talking about funding the non-motorized trail master plan because we didn't fund it, but then uh they found this grant money.
Could be the application for this grant this last.
That that's kind of what I was remembering, right, yeah, Maddie said she's getting on right now, okay, fantastic.
Yeah, that that matches my recollection, Jack, that we declined to fund it in last year's budget, right, shortly thereafter they came up with.
Yeah, she and Elisa, I think, found the grant, and then, yeah, then the city came in with some of their money to to help pay the uh.
To keep things moving along, um I move. Don't, no, I moved to approve you dots technical planning assistance program funds cooperation cooperative agreement. That will provide ninety thousand dollars to update the twenty-eleven Grand County non-motorized trails master plan.
Thanks Kevin. Motion from Commissioner Walker, anyone uh want to second that one?
I'll second that.
Okay, uh motion from Commissioner Walker to approve, second from Commissioner Hadeen, we're just waiting for uh Maddie to come on in case anyone has any questions for. Her, I think we talked about this uh quite a bit last year, I think, and it is uh well overdue. Uh thirteen years between between plans, so I think I'd I'd be in favor. Alright, yeah, I'm with you Mike.
We've heard about this before a few times.
We have, sure. Oh, here's, here's Maddie, come on, yeah, you, well, come on. I think we were, we were, we were just discussing, I think what we'd landed on was that we had discussed this last year, and then I remember, if we remember yourself and Alicia. From planning and zoning had found this money when we denied it in the budget to come forward, and then the city was going to provide the co-payment on the. On the grant, so basically the fiscal.
Yeah, you know it all.
Yeah, that's what I thought, okay, just clarifying, um, okay, we've had a motion to approve already in a second, is there anyone who would like to, since Maddie is here now? Anyone have a question for Maddie?
Quick question, sure, I'm sorry, if I, anyone else come?
Yeah, yeah, go ahead.
Cool, you got the thirty thousand from the city, how did you get that buy-in from the city on this, like what? What said that they wanted to throw thirty K at it?
So we have an interlocal agreement, so they give us thirty thousand every year. Um, and so, and the original intent that's in the ILA is that they did want um in two thousand nineteen to start to have us start working on a master plan. And COVID hit and various other things, so we're just doing that now, but um they're supportive of this project, it's going to include. Things that connect to neighborhoods and are in city limits as well, so it's going to be a collaborative project.
Okay, thanks Maddie.
Bill? Maybe I just need an update, but is this part of the trail master plan that was discussed and we had. A very contentious commission meeting about that we had people in here because we're putting trails across property on our plan. Without really involving them.
Yeah, so the intent of that project was there's a, you know, request to kind of fast track the portion that would involve private, private lands. Because, you know, there's development and changes in that area, uh but this is the larger project, so this is looking at the entire county. Um, you know, looking at like the vision for for ten years of where we want non-motorized trails.
Great, I I just guess that I would hope that we're involving people and we're involving their property.
Yeah, and I think this will be, you know, I'm I'm hoping the project will be twelve months so that we'll have. You know, a clear scope and public engagement, kind of go through a whole process.
Thank you. Thanks Maddie, uh any other questions or discussion? Alright, let's see, had a motion from Commissioner Walker and a second from Commissioner Hadeen to approve, all those in favor of the motion, raise your hands. And the motion passes unanimously.
Thanks.
Alright, thanks, um alright, moving on to agenda item four, rezone request for fifteen forty Spanish Valley Drive, Moab Heat and Cool. From large lot residential, L L R, uh to neighborhood commercial, N C, and Amy Wiser and uh, you're not Bryce. Thank you very much, I'll turn it over to you guys for the presentation.
Hi, thank you Chair Hadler and members of the commission, I don't have a formal presentation this evening. I think we've all seen it, you have everything in your packet, I'm just here for questions if you have any. And um our code enforcement officer Brandon Black is here as well. And the main question that we have for the commission that we'd like you to talk about is a timeframe for the applicant. To come into compliance, so Brandon's here to answer questions about that and uh some general guidelines and standards. But that's, that's mainly what we need you guys to uh to look at besides making a decision on this.
Okay, great, thanks for that uh direction, Amy, um and to remind everybody, we did have a public hearing on this. At our last meeting, we definitely um uh got some public comment on this one. And uh let's see, the public hearing clear uh finished uh last Wednesday at five o'clock. Um, so I will open the floor, any, any questions, Bill?
Yeah, I would like to just clear for the record for both Amy and for citizens, I'm the one that remanded this back to the. Planning Commission, because during the meeting when this originally came forward, there were numerous. In fact, quite a few residents that came in in support of it, when before there had only been people against it that it, that had. Made that aware to the planning commission, so it wasn't whether I had a horse one way or the other in this, because I don't, I just. Felt that it was an obligation that we needed to have them hear all sides of this and. I I would have done the same thing for the people that are complaining about this as much as I would for the individual that was trying for this. So it's, it had nothing to do with. One side or the other was also suggested that because I am a contractor that I had a relationship with Moab Heat and Cool. Which I haven't ever had, um I do know who he is and I have visited the property and seen the problems that exist out there, but. There's no connection one way or the other with me as far as my contractor side of things with that.
Uh, let's see, Mike and then Trish, uh Trish first.
Would it be appropriate to go ahead and make a motion and then we can start to discuss it, or what do you, do you want to, we're just asking questions right now?
I mean, I think you can always make a motion, I think that's just part of any, any.
Okay, so I'm gonna.
Motion you can, and we can.
So I'm gonna move to deny the request to rezone real property located at fifteen forty Spanish Valley Drive. Known as Grand County parcel number zero two dash zero zero one seven dash zero two zero two. From large lot residential to neighborhood commercial contingent upon the following, if approving. And I don't know, do we want to go through these, because we're gonna maybe discuss if, I don't know, do we, do you want me to keep going?
If it doesn't meet any of those, I don't think that would be my thing.
Well, right, right, yeah, okay, okay. So that's my motion. The number of days, and I guess that I feel like we should discuss if we, if we do decide to deny it. We can discuss, or do you want me to throw a number of days at it? I mean, I have something in my mind.
Right, I think, sure, sure, yeah, yeah.
So just, you just want me to include um applicant shall have the indemnities if denied, is that where you're?
Maybe it's two separate motions.
Why don't you put in a number now?
Okay, okay, so applicant shall have um ninety days to cease and desist all commercial operations at the property.
Okay, thank you, um before I get to Mike, I would, uh uh there's a motion on the table, is there anyone who wants to second that motion? You'll second that, Devin, okay, alright, thank you, um then I'll uh give Mike the floor.
I agree with you, Trish. But uh I I really think uh. Like Bill said, it was shown that there was outcry for and outcry against, uh in looking at it. My personal opinion is denial, but I don't like your ninety days, I actually would prefer six months to a year. I know coming up with a commercial property is not going to be easy for them, they have employees, I don't want to ditch those employees to suffer.
Uh Trish?
So I want to give a little bit of background from the planning commission and that and that discussion. Um, since it has gone back to the planning commission, we haven't seen, I couldn't give the exact number, maybe Amy could help me out. But um there has been very few either letters or comments in um. Supporting this rezone, uh the applicants actually haven't come to either of the, whether it was the. The county commission or the planning commission, um some of the things that I thought were really extremely relevant. And I'll just go into that is, you know, there was this belief that at one time this was basically a commercial property. Um, and that was never the case, it's, it's really great, I think we have an amazing planning commission and I'm not just fluffing their feathers. But it's really nice to have, for example, Mary Hoffine, and she has just that extensive institutional knowledge of um. Not only our land use code, but obviously every single parcel in the county, and that was a sheet metal shop. But that was never a permitted sheet metal shop, um they were asked to stop operations by the county many times and they never did. So this idea that at one time it was a commercial permitted property, that is not the case. In the end, the the planning commission, Mary Hoffine, sent an unfavorable recommendation. Basically stating that it does not meet the general plan and or the future land use um plan, it is not compatible with the surrounding neighborhood. They cannot mitigate concerns that are related to that business and the driveway is not up to commercial standards. And this was seconded by Jerry Cl- uh Klaus.
Place.
Place, thank you, sorry about that, and that was a unanimous decision made by, so they, they, the planning commission sent forward. An unfavorable recommendation, recommendation unanimously, and I thought they did a really great job in looking at all of the factors. And and that was what was sent forth, so.
Thank you, Trish. Um Kevin?
Um, first, I I agree with Bill's characterization of our previous meeting, you know, when we remanded it back, I think, yeah, Bill suggested it, but a majority of us were. You know, agreed, agreed with that and, you know, it seemed like, I think at the time this is a kind of a tough issue, so. I I just, I I agree, it's hard and then, you know, there's a lot of difficulties with commercial businesses finding um. Commercial real estate, but I I also think that, you know, we need to protect residential neighborhoods from this this kind of intrusion. You have to draw the line somewhere, I I don't, I don't really see any extenuating circumstances in this case. You know, Trish gave some, some of the reasons why, um I'm not sure what the right amount of time is for them to transition. I mean, I think we should try to be accommodating, on the other hand, I think we've been accommodating for years by taking, you know, we spent two years. Or I don't know how exactly how long it is, but you know, quite a long time before actually forcing, you know, they could have had media or something, so. So in one sense, I'd, I'd, you know, it'd be nice if they could, you know, have sort of an orderly transition away from the property, but. There's already been quite a lot of leniency on the part of the county. Um, I I think this is a good reminder of this, that when we discuss, you know, zone, bigger zoning issues, including. South one ninety-one corridor, we need to think about this like this, make sure that they have places to go, that they're not priced out by. Other types of businesses that can maybe pay more for real estate and so that we should um. I think, you know, the same way we try to use the zoning code to insulate um our workforce, the larger housing market. Um, that might be difficult for them to compete with, I think we should also look into, you know, the types of business that we need to function as a community. Is be insulated from. More prop, you know, tourism related businesses basically, so um as far as I know, we've all agreed to do that, it hasn't happened yet, but hopefully. Over the next year or so, as we work through the future land use plan, we'll be able to, you know, make that concrete.
Thanks Kevin, yeah, Amy, go ahead.
Yeah, Chair, I asked uh Brandon, our code enforcement officer, just sort of if there's a typical timeframe for something like this. Because I'm still learning how we do code enforcement and um or what his suggestion might be for the timeframe, so I'll just, I'll let.
Yeah, thank, that was actually going to be my question to Brandon as well, like what, what, I, what would you suggest, what is, what does it look like when we, when we do, um, you know. Tell somebody that they're gonna have to transition out of their current situation.
Right, so this, this particular situation, they've got, you know, quite a lot of material that they have on on their property, so they're gonna have to find somewhere. Big enough storage for everything, all their equipment, um. And so I'm, I'm more on the fence of ninety days to a hundred and eighty days, I think that's an ideal amount, just because this has been going on since December of. Two thousand twenty-two, so they've had. Quite a bit of time to know that this was a possibility, um but still want to give them the opportunity to have the time they need to find somewhere to go.
Okay, so you, your, your recommendation would be somewhere between the ninety and the hundred and eighty days, seems, that also seems pretty reasonable to me, um Trish?
I think I'm okay with a hundred and eighty, Mike, but I don't think I can go a year, so, and and I appreciate Brandon's input. So I'm, I'm okay with that, but I don't think I can go a year, and I I don't think the neighbors that have, you know, had to endure that. Could go a year, I think they'd be pretty disciplined with the county at this point, Mike?
Well, I understand both sides here, I really don't, going into winter right now, it's not going to be a a breeze to move all of that stuff. As I've seen the site, uh nor is it going to be a breeze for keeping all employees on during a move. Uh and a reacquisition, a reacquisition of some uh another property, uh is what I'm guessing will happen with that. But I I really just don't want, the only reason I proposed, proposed here is, I don't want one employee to suffer in, you know. It it comes hard to force action, I understand it has to be done, uh Kevin was right to that point. None of us like doing it, but there there's a point in the line in the sand that has to be drawn, and uh. But I don't want it to come to the cost of even one employee, so that's why I pushed it here.
Uh Bill?
Yeah, I I think a hundred and eighty days minimum, um something that we might want to. Take into account and weigh in this situation is that currently they are the contractor of choice to replace all of the heating and cooling units. On this very building, of which we are writing them a check for half of, out of this consent agenda. So I think we've got to be real careful that we're not forcing somebody into a situation that they won't even be able to perform. The work that we need from them, so just thought I might throw that out there.
Kevin?
Um, yeah, this could, could be off base, but I just want to throw the idea out there, in listening to the testimony from. Neighbors both recently and a few months ago, it seemed like a big part of their complaint was truck traffic up and down that driveway. It wasn't so much that there's all this stuff on the property or that, you know, the activities are happening, and and I just, so one idea. And maybe I'm, if I'm wrong, please tell me, but but one idea is to say that, you know, the, the, the truck track, you know, has to stop within. Some shorter amount of time, but give longer if it's just a question of clearing things off the property or other, you know, less disruptive things that are happening.
Although it does seem like in clearing things off the property, you're gonna have truck traffic, those seem mutually. Well, inclusive. But I I I think. I I think a hundred and eighty days seems entirely reasonable. That's half a year. I think, I mean, going into winter, things do slow down a little, but I think it may be easier going into winter. To get that done than going into like a busy season or the hot summer, you know, when you're when you're out pumping. Heavy loads. I'd rather do it in the wintertime than summertime around here any day. Uh, and and a hundred and eighty days is 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 half a year is a lot of time. I mean, it's not a lot of time in some sense, but I I I agree with Trish. I think a year seems excessive. And and taking. Brandon's advice into account, going for the longer end of that ninety to hundred and eighty days seems reasonable. Trish?
I don't have anything to say.
Okay, so it sounds like a lot of people like a hundred and eighty days, so I'll I'll move to amend the motion to. Replace the ninety day compliance period with a hundred and eighty days.
I'll second that.
Okay, so we've amended the original motion to. Uh, give the applicants a hundred and eighty days to comply.
We have, yeah, we have to.
Great. What was that, Kevin?
We we need to vote on the amendment.
Oh, I'm sorry. Of course we do. Okay, so let's see. So the amendment was. Uh, motion by Commissioner Walker and seconded by Commissioner Dean. All those in favor of the amendment, raise your hands. And the amended motion or the amendment passes unanimously back to the original motion. Um, which was a motion by Commissioner Hadeen and seconded by Commissioner Clapper. Um, any further discussion there, or is everyone ready to vote? All right. Looks like we're ready to vote. All those in favor of the motion, raise your hands. And that also passes unanimously. Awesome. Thank you, guys, very much.
Thanks, Brandon, for the advice. We appreciate that.
Yeah, definitely. Okay, um, on to agenda item number five, resolution initiating proceeding proceedings to amend the land use code. And this one is presented by Commissioner Walker, as well as our Planning and Zoning Director, Amy Weiser. Thanks for staying, Amy. Who would like to present first? Amy?
I'm happy to, but.
I I defer to to Vice Chair. I I'm here for questions and and, you know.
Thanks.
Whatever you all need.
Yeah, so so we we did this about six months ago, but there's there's a provision in state code that. Says that if you're in the process of revising the land use code. Then there's a, you know, the usual rule is when someone gets a complete vested application, you have to apply the land use code that existed at that time. But there's an exception when the code's being revised, but you can't say in hindsight you're revising, you have to announce ahead of time. That you're revising it, so that's sometimes it occurs in section five oh eight of the county. Land Management Act. Um, and so the. If the wording of this one is pretty similar to the one we passed six months ago, it's got a few more specifics in it. Um, just to help planning staff know just what may or may not. Be affected by this, so.
Okay. Okay, thanks, Kevin. And again, Amy stated that she is here for questions and. Comments, so I'd open it up. Mike?
Oh, I'm really.
Okay. Anyone questions for Amy? So, yeah, so we did have a hundred and eighty day period. I think that ended the last one ended today. Is that right? Okay, so we'd be looking at doing another one of those while we worked on this. Yeah, just just for background. Bill, did you have your hand up?
Yes, so this resolution is just for the hundred and eighty day extension. Is that my understanding, or is there more to this? That this resolution is covering?
So this, it's actually not an extension. It's actually. It's a base second one hundred and eighty days, so. So that answers that question. And then your second part was. The last hundred and eighty days listed a few articles from the land use code. And so this time we just made sure that. There was a little bit more detail and a few more code sections added. And so we we added that additional detail, but to sort of. Make sure there's a difference between the first hundred and eighty days and this hundred and eighty days.
And so I guess I'm going back to our previous meeting and maybe workshop where. Mr. Walker seemed to be directing you. To make some changes that maybe you, in your opinion, didn't want to do it this time, and that we were out of. Process here, and the staff needed more time for this. I also know that the planning commission voted against this also, and so I'm wondering why we're moving forward with this at this time. When. Hired somebody here to give us some direction and guidance in that department was against it at the last meeting. Planning and zoning is against this as well. Um, it's almost like we're directing staff from a single commissioner, which I know that there's been a lot of discussion going around the commission about the fact that that isn't. The way that we should be doing things, and so I just I guess I'm looking for a little more clarity from. The commission and the leadership here as to why we're moving forward with this.
Um, I I think you're confused. This doesn't amend the land use code, thing that went before the planning commission that we were discussing previously, or the actual amendments of land use code. Those have not happened yet. They're hopefully be on our agenda in a few, sometime in September. We discussed the schedule before. This is just a resolution that helps, you know, cover the county in case a land use application comes in. During this transition to your code. I think also the planning commission, so certainly the planning commotion didn't. Oppose this thing that's in front of us right now. I also think they didn't oppose the proposed land use miss. They just tabled it. They didn't want to act quickly. Great.
And and just to add to that. This didn't go before the planning commission for recommendations. This is a commission decision, so just to clarify what Vice Chair Walker just said, as far as did the planning commission support this or not. Um, and I will just add. I feel the hundred and eighty days, the way this reads, which I want to make sure people understand. Who are listening and and are maybe in the audience. So typically what happens, and I think Vice Chair Walker mentioned this also. So when you submit a land use application, as soon as it's deemed complete, and you've paid your fees for submittal. Uh, your application is subject to whatever code sections are adopted and enforced at that time. What this does is it allows the county. To say, okay, we know you submitted your application and you were deemed to complete. But in this timeframe, we may change some of those code sections that you relied on. When you submitted your application. So. It creates a lot of uncertainty for applicants and developers and all those folks out there that. Want to build ADUs or want to build homes or want to develop things, so. I just want to make clear that that's what this does. Is it also puts staff in a position where, you know, we have to tell people we can submit this, we can take this in. Um, we can't necessarily offer you approval at this time, so. Or we can, but it means it could be changed. So I just want to make that clear that that's what this does. And and yes, we have lots of code revisions we'd like to make. And a hundred and eighty days certainly gives us the time needed to make those code revisions. But this is a different thing than than we need time to make code revisions. This is. Um, we want to somehow safeguard. The county while we figure out. The code revisions, so it's a little different.
I I think I understand you, Amy. So so if someone had submitted an application during our previous hundred and eighty days that ended today, then. Then this one wouldn't apply to them. That would then they'd be working with the same set of rules that had been previously. That that were that were in place.
That's correct.
So so with this hundred and eighty days, if we if we say we don't do anything until the end of the hundred and eighty days, someone applies during this, then the same rules would apply that that are currently in place right now.
Yeah, I believe I believe that's the currently in place right now just just got me. So.
Yeah.
So whatever code sections, whatever our code right now is in effect right now. So we've got some code revisions coming up next week and the week after.
Yeah.
And so, yes, if someone were to submit an application tomorrow. This hundred, if if the commission votes to approve this, the hundred and eighty days starts. And even though they submitted tomorrow and. They've spent the last three months relying on whatever code was in place three months prior, that we will put them on notice that. Some of these code sections could be changing.
Yeah.
And that it could affect their development.
Uh, yeah, got it. Bill?
And I appreciate you correcting me on where I was going there with that. I I do want to still reiterate the fact. That those changes, those land use code changes that are coming up inevitably here, there is a vast number of constituents that are extremely against alarmed by all of this. And that. We just want to be extremely careful moving forward, and I'm not directing you. I'm saying we as a body need to be very careful when we start moving forward with those changes and. It it's important that we watch what we're doing here and that the public is very much aware of what we're doing.
And I would I would agree with that.
Right, and I I would reiterate that I think we have a really strong, I think Amy's come in. Hit the ground running. I think you two agree. I was pretty impressed that first night. It was like your birthday. I'm like, there is no way I could have pulled that off a million years. And but I also think we have a very strong planning commission, and so I believe that, you know. As we move through those revisions, it will be done well.
One one other question about process, if say we, if if like Kevin said, we are able to get some of the revisions in the next couple of meetings. Would that, once we get the revisions done with the hundred and eighty day period, close? Or would we have to close it, or would there still be hundred and eighty days where we still may make further revisions?
I think that's. That's a good question, and it might be up to the discretion of the commission, but I would probably want the county attorney to weigh in on that, but. So we have listed multiple articles in the code, and we know there's multiple articles that need revisions. So I think I think it'd be something for the commission to discuss. So if we get. Certain ones done with a certain amount of time, can we say, okay, we're done, you know, and and I. Again, I don't know the answer to that question, but it's certainly something to to look at.
Okay, okay.
Yeah, I I think the the way the way this actually. Reads, uh, you know, first, I think this has already been said, it's worth reading. This isn't an extension of the first hundred and eighty days, like if someone had applied three months ago.
Got it, yeah.
Then and we we didn't make any revision, you know, we. Didn't manage to make revisions during the hundred and eighty days, then their application will go forward as of. Yesterday or today or something like that. It's just it's just a separate.
Sure.
Hundred and eighty day period. Um, also, it doesn't it doesn't say that things can't be approved. It just means that, you know, we we have the option of. Putting a hold on or or not approving applications if if we, as a county collectively. The commissioner and planning staff, you know, just determines that. So, you know, the polls are going to change in four weeks. It would be appropriate to do this now, and the reason you do that is, you know, we don't. Yep. We give lots of telegraph that we're going to revise land use code. A lot of public notice comes out. There's two public hearings. It takes. You know, many weeks between when a change is suggested, like changing commercial zoning of South one ninety one. When it's actually implemented. And so this is to address the incentive that someone might have to try to. Get an application in during the the dying moments of the old rules. Start.
Okay, thanks. Mike?
Did see it coming. I am part of the ADO. Uh, just want to get that out there on record. Uh, I just didn't see it coming. So.
Got it. No worries, Mike.
Sorry, see what?
Oh, he was he was just he was disclosing that he is.
I was disclosing.
Oh, oh, okay.
That he has a project going on right now.
Okay.
No, I I understand, Mike. Thank you.
Yeah.
Which is not effective, because this application is already.
Yeah.
And I would just, you know, again, reiterate that I think. This is my fourth week on the job, and I am hearing a lot of frustration from applicants. Um, I I don't think the commissioners are the only ones that that want these code revisions to to be done. I mean, I'm hearing frustration. Um, and they really want certainty, and they want to have clear. Objective standards and and know what they can do with their properties, and that is our job. It's the planning department's job. It's the county commissioners, the planning commissioners' jobs to make sure that we get a code that does that for them. Um, and so. You know, that's priority one, two, three for me. So it's, you know, just to say that again, I'm sensing a lot of frustration, and I feel. Giving them more uncertainty is is going to be a difficult thing.
Excellent, and I think that there's a, I appreciate the the. Um, urgency to to get these addressed so that we have that certainty. But I think that there's a lot of people that that don't have applications in that are also looking for certainty. So it's not just the people that are trying to develop something or, you know, get something approved, but there's people that are living here now currently that are are looking. For these revisions that have been a long time coming and a long time discussed and. And kind of outdated things from decades ago, when we couldn't imagine what this valley was going to look like. And so I think that bringing this up to speed is it's nice to hear that it's priority one, two, and three. And so I look forward to to getting some some of these updates in place so that we have that certainty for not just advocates and developers, but homeowners and residents.
Yes, Kevin? So, um, I move to the resolution initiating proceedings to amend the county's land use code. Regulations in a manner that would bring good approval of an application as submitted pursuant to. Seventeen dash twenty seven A dash five oh eight.
Thanks, Kevin. Second from Evan? All right, um, further discussion on that before we call for a vote. Bill?
Yeah, I I guess I just want to go on record that I believe that a lot of the uncertainty that people are faced with is the fact that we've given. We put them on hold for six months, a hundred and eighty days is six months, and now we're once again asking them for another six months before they can do anything. And so I'm I'm really against this. It is not. A business owners or developers or builder or anybody's responsibility to make sure that we're doing our job here at the county. The hundred and eighty original days should have been enough to push this through and to, once again. Throw a boat anchor on everybody that has some kind of project they want to bring forward for another hundred and eighty days. I'm I'm just against that.
Uh, Kevin?
Yeah, I think that mischaracterizes what's happening here. Anyone who's already submitted an application is not affected by this at all. You know, they're. If this doesn't apply retroactively, it doesn't apply to any. The applications that have already been submitted. But I do agree with you. It would have been great if we could have gotten those done within hundred and eighty days, but it was tough because we had a lot of turnover in planning staff. It's very difficult for people like Amy, who, you know, sort of arrived. Middle of this complicated process.
And and I think, I like to my to my point earlier, my question to Amy earlier. I I would like to see us get some of those changes done that we've discussed in the next couple of meetings, and then and then figure out a way maybe to to in the hundred and eighty days after we do that, not. Not burden people with that for the. Rest of the.
I was ready to approve it last meeting.
All right. Mike?
Is there a way to shorten? Okay, we approved the hundred and eighty days. Uh, it goes to decision decisions made. Do we can we stop the?
That that's what I just asked. The the way the code's written is it doesn't. It just says if we pass a resolution like this within the past hundred and eighty days, then we may, if we choose. Not act immediately on an application. Like, we got all the manuscript. So that it gives us an option, but it doesn't mean we can't approve things. The idea is if we complete the resolution, then we can just start approving things again. But there's not, I don't know that there's a, I guess we could rescind the ordinance, maybe that. Cancel it out, but but I but I think there's multiple rounds of changes, like, you know, this mentions. Changes to the land use map, but that's not what's happening in September. That was something that was put off till the future, so.
Okay.
I gotta see there being some some larger urgent changes coming on, and that we kind of address those as soon as possible, and then. Leave the thing open, as then we kind of work on like the higher, you know, start with the low hanging fruit. Work on the next ones. I don't think in a hundred and eighty days we're going to figure out where a six foot fence is allowed and an eight foot fence is allowed. I think it's okay to take time with that, but some of these bigger kind of things that. That are ambiguous, it's, you know, get those addressed first, let the thing run its course. See how much we get done in a hundred and eighty days, and hopefully set a place where. Can just kind of move on from there.
Thanks. All right, any other comment before we call for a vote? All right, see, the motion was made by Commissioner Walker and seconded. All right, see the motion was made by Commissioner Walker and seconded by Commissioner Clapper. Um, so the motion was to, uh, to approve another hundred and eighty day period. Um, all those in favor of the motion, raise your hands. All opposed. And all abstaining. All right, the motion passes four to one with Commissioner, uh, Winfield, uh, in opposition and Commissioner McCurdy, uh, abstaining from the vote. Thanks, Amy.
And I will say, I was, I was watching on, uh, whatever YouTube, whatever we're on. And it was extremely difficult to hear people. I just wanted to point that out. So it really helps when you put your microphone right here.
Thank you, Amy. Yes, we, I think we're all guilty of not doing that at times. Appreciate it. Okay, uh, onto agenda item six, letter of support for the Utah Office of Energy Development. And this one is presented by, uh, Commissioner Hadeen.
Yeah, and this wasn't really, you know, it just, um, Quinn sent it out as, you know, it came out of Mallory's eh, eh, box and Quinn sent it out. And I said, oh, I'm happy to basically edit it and send it forward. So basically this came out of UAC. Um, UAC is applying for a federal grant funding for EV charging station for numerous counties. To be honest, I don't know if we're a, a part of that. Um, this letter of support will aid in strengthening, strength, strengthening their application. And this was from Brandy Grace. So I just took her kind of skeleton and, and, you know, changed it just, just slightly to, just so they don't get that, you know, how you get the letters that are identical all the time. And so that's what I did.
Okay. You want to make a motion, Trish?
Uh, sure. I move to approve the letter of support for the Utah Office of Energy Development.
Thanks. And Michael second?
Um, second.
Yes, Mike. Sorry.
I like it. Is it going to, is there any chance of it directly affecting?
I don't know.
Okay.
I don't know if we were a part of that grant, but UAC just sent out a plea to write letters of support. So I just did that.
Yeah.
I like the support. I just want to see more here.
Definitely more, more here. I agree, Mike. Is this the, I mean, maybe Bill knows, but UAC had a big meeting more than a year ago about electric charging stations. And there was some, is this the continuation of that?
Yeah, it was like, yeah.
It, it is. And that, I believe that one was spearheaded by, uh, Mr. Garn, Jordan Garn, the lobbyist. And I believe he was the lobbyist for the company that was trying to install all of those and manufacturing. Believe that's kind of fallen aside and UAC is just trying to continue pushing this forward because there is funding. The original one that Mr. Garn was involved in, um, was not allocated or received. And so this one is just a, the second option or go around towards that.
Okay. All right, anyone else? So the motion, uh, was from Commissioner Hadeen, second from Commissioner McCurdy. Uh, all those in favor of the motion, raise your hands. And that passes unanimously. Uh, we are on to agenda item seven, volunteer appointment to the Solid Waste Special Service District. Mary's not here, uh, but she did, uh, tell me the background on this. She said they had two outstanding applicants to the position. The position is for, um, uh, that was for the position of, of Chad Harris, who sadly passed away recently. And, um, uh, so it's a, uh, it's a short, it's not a full term. And Mary said both of the two applicants were equally awesome. She said they were both great. They'd love to have both of them. And she, uh, indicated that the Solid Waste Service District is, is very interested in expanding from a five person to a seven person board. And the, uh, applicant who is not put forward in recommendation here would be the first person to be, um, appointed to that expanded board. So the person that they decided on is Ashley Wareham. Um, Wareham, I'm sorry. Yeah. Sorry. Yes, Trish?
Motion?
Okay.
Um, I move to appro- approve the appointment of Ashley Wareham to the Solid Waste Special Service District term ending twelve thirty one, two thousand and twenty seven.
And Mike seconded. Sorry, Bill, Mike keeps, uh, putting his hand up like a millisecond before you. There you go. Uh, all right, any discussion on this? Seeing none, I'll call for a vote. All those in favor of the motion, raise your hands. And that passes unanimously. All right, we're on to agenda item eight, independent contractor agreement or ICA with EFG Consulting LLC to prepare a comprehensive impact fee study. Quinn?
We put this on a bid several months ago. We received one bid from EFG Consulting. Um, some of you are familiar, Cody Geter has some other contracts with the county, but this is for the impact fee analysis. Um, we've noticed that properly as of this point and we're ready to move forward. This would revise our impact fee analysis from twenty fourteen. Is that right, Dan?
Twenty fifteen.
Twenty fifteen. And updated.
Great.
Any questions?
Something that's kind of been a long time coming, right? I think we put the RFP out in.
It's not absolute requirement. Update them every five years. It's recommended, um, you know, updating them brings you current with current costs of, you know, projects and also changes in priorities and different things like that. Um, one thing that we added this go around, um, to the scope of work is to look at trying to capture, this is tricky. We'll have to figure out how to do it, but capture the impact of visitors. The impact, so development that, that promotes visitation, overnight accommodation type development obviously has an impact more than just their footprint on the ground where they're sitting. And so we're looking at trying to see how that might impact a trail capacity, parking lots and trailheads. Um, some of those factors. And that's kind of a new twist. I don't know if that's been done before. Um, certainly not typical, but we're, we're trying to address that somehow. It's, you know, that shakes out.
Okay.
So you will get a, there will be an impact fee ordinance update that will come to you to basically be the outcome of this and say, based on these projects that need to happen, here's what we recommend the fees per development fee. That'll be another ordinance.
How, how long does the impact fee study typically last?
I think we're given a hundred and eighty, ninety days.
It was ninety, a hundred and twenty days. And, and I will say that this has been challenging for us to kind of decide which to go first. With the impact of the analysis or the stormwater master plan update or the capital facilities plan, all of which need to be updated. And so we kind of talked internally and, and thought that perhaps we would do the impact of the analysis first, even though it's not quite the most out of date. Then next year, we were hoping, based on commission approval of the budget next year, to do the stormwater mitigation plan update. And then in twenty six, capital facilities plan update. And then in twenty seven, we would redo this again a little bit sooner than normal because we would have two other brand new plans to tie into it. So it's kind of our long-term master plan.
Great. Evan?
Uh, this potentially a revenue generator in a way.
It is. It's a fee that's levied on new construction, so new building, we, we levy it at building permit time. You can do it either at, at subdivision time, land development, permit time, or building.
So I agree with that prioritization. I think it's overdue and that there's, uh, it's nice to kind of catch up. And then who would be the, the point person for, um, working with the contractor?
Probably.
A combination of me and Dan, but I think we both know where that went down.
Administrator on boards, they should be involved.
For sure. Yeah, admin office, planning zone.
I think there's other things in the impact fees we haven't been collecting. So not just like how great is the impact? But I think we have the eligibility to, to collect for like parks.
Yes.
And I wonder if like a lot of our, uh, paths could fall into that park sort of thing.
That's what, that's what we kind of added in to try and expand on that component. Because the county has extensive trail facilities that have been constructed. Now they're a little bit interesting in that they're kind of joint county, public or, uh, BLM, you know, type of things. But the county sort of manages the facility with an agreement there. And, you know, capacity wise, the impacts on the trailheads is fairly significant costly when you need to put in toilets at the trailheads or parking lots at the trailheads to increase capacity. Trying to capture that would be nice.
Well, if there is some of that higher level, like visioning, like what we want in the future, you know, that because I, I don't know why we haven't been collecting those, because there's like a line item for it and it's zeroed out. And so I would like to, uh, update some of that.
Right. I will say in the last analysis, um, the trails analysis basically looked at two trails. It was the two paved bike path, Moab Canyon Pathway and the Moab Riverway Parkway. And basically, since the county didn't actually expend its own funds on either one of those, there was no fund recovery. So that's why it's zeroed out. But I think that was fairly short cited in terms of what our overall infrastructure is.
And I think updates that are happening at OSTA with the playgrounds out there, I call that.
Great. Mike?
I hate to be the naysayer always, but, uh, we're spending seventy four thousand dollars to find out to charge more people more money. In short?
In short, that's correct, yes.
Seems like we could appropriate seventy four thousand dollars to not charge the people more money on several points. I, I see this as, this is going to affect in a s- small way more building. And spending money on, it is a revenue source. I understand where we get our money from. But we're spending money to decide to charge people more money. I don't like that.
But certainly you're prerogative.
Yeah.
Um, and I don't have a good handle on how much revenue is generating, but it's not as much as you could think.
Okay.
So it's, it's roughly, the, the county wants, so not excluding water and sewer because those go to the city and the districts. Those are the lion's share of what you pay impact fees when you pull a building grid. The county's portion for roads and drainage, I believe, is less than a thousand dollars. So per building.
Agreed. And again, previously stated, I'm part of the ADO program. This is what's holding up my development. I could say that from personal.
Certainly adds cost.
It, seventy eight, between the entities you named, roughly, my small project, it's seventy eight thousand dollars to me. So these fees add up. And now we're paying someone to decide, which it's not going to go down. We all know that. We're paying someone seventy four thousand dollars to dis- uh, hopefully inform us we should be charging people more to build. This is my point of view.
Uh, Stephen, go ahead. You had your hand up.
So under, under the statute, every once in a while, we have to have, uh, the study done, justify the amounts that we're charging. We haven't yet been challenged on those fees, but if in the future, if somebody wants to come out and challenge that amount, if we haven't done a s- a survey or study within a certain period of time, then those fees become, uh, more subject to discrepancy. And so that's what, um, one of the, one of the difficulties is, is, you know, at a certain amount, you might not be subject to a challenge. But, um, if you don't do it for a long time and you want to change them, then it's going to be hard to do so.
Is it, is statutorily, do you have to do it every like five years or ten years or?
It's recommended every five years. I was looking in the statutes and seeing they know, but I didn't actually see a mandated update period. There was like, basically says they should be updated. There is, there is different rules that apply to. So if you're a utility with above three thousand connections or you're a community with above, I think five thousand uh, ten thousand homes. Um, if you're below that threshold, you get to use a simplified process. If you're above that threshold, you have to be much more diligent about how it's, how you're justifying that and stuff like that. We're still below the threshold, whatever it is.
Okay. And then, and then the study like looks at what a fair fee would be. They look at other communities that are similar to ours and kind of what.
It definitely will include a comparison to like communities. I can just tell you as a, as a friend of mine, my own little searching around. And this is part of what triggered looking more trails is that, um, Park City charges about seventy one hundred dollars per ERU for trails and parks. Quite substantial.
That is.
Um, so, so there's definitely, uh, not that we should imitate that, but, but there's a fair bit of latitude, there's a fair bit of range.
They do have a really nice trail system.
Yeah. Yeah. So see, I think, does this also look at the, um, water and sewer impact fees or is that a?
So those, because those are levied by, um, the district, they do their own and they do those fairly frequently.
Okay.
So if you're a member, if you're in the district there, they have that every two or three years usually they do an update.
Okay.
So we don't do that. This is for law enforcement, for public safety, um, parks and rec, parks and trails, storm drainage and roads, those four things.
Okay. Bill, did you have your hand up, Steve?
I guess. Take note of my microphone here. Um, I guess, is there a reason that our timeline pushes the storm off to next year? I mean, what's the reasoning that we couldn't be doing a couple of these at the same time? I don't, I, I don't think it was intentional when Mr. Clapper said that the priority was this over storm. But I believe that we should be doing our due diligence here and moving forward on our stormwater plan as soon as possible rather than waiting another year. And in there, that, that would be my concern.
I think that's a good point. We budgeted for this this year. We just haven't budgeted for the stormwater.
I mean, I, I would be in favor of running the two of them simultaneous. They aren't going to be the same contractor anyway. But I, I believe that's important enough that we should be looking for funding and moving that forward rather, sooner rather than later.
So there is some balance in the stormwater mitigation fund right now, certainly enough to cover, um, updating the thing. Uh, would require a, an end of the year line of budget.
Budget amount, right.
But I mean, if, if, if that was a consensus of the commission to push that, we could push that sooner than our next.
Yeah, I would, you know, if we, if you feel it, we have the funds.
It's going to come from the same pot. I think it's going to be allocation.
I, I think it's a pretty high priority to take account to the amount of citizens that are affected by this.
I, I will say that, you know, we've had stormwater master plans that have recommended courses of action with price tags, um, in nineteen ninety seven and again in two thousand and eleven. And commission has not really, those commissions at those times, you guys, but didn't really do any. So just doing the plan and the study doesn't guarantee.
Yeah, that's, that's what I was gonna say, that if there's, even if they're old, if there's plans in place, it's almost like, let's put the money at execution rather than.
Just our discussion item this afternoon, later today, I'm going to bring to you a couple of things.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, I, I guess I echo, I mean, I, I agree with Bill that if, if we're, there's no point in delaying, you know, updating the plan. If that's what we need to do and, you know, we can just submit the budget, that's easy. But like Dan says, it's, it's not the plan that's holding itself. It's a, a plan for how to fund this and like how much a year are we planning on spending. I think if, you know, we were to do that, or if we were to have a better idea how we're going to prioritize projects because, you know, there's a lot of rank that's identified, not all going to happen soon. So I, I think those have been the bottom mix and it, it just has seemed like such a large job that various commissions have not been motivated to get started. But maybe the recent floods are motivation to get this moving.
And I think, Dan, you said you're going to talk about this more, but, you know, the little bit of discussions we've had, you know, you were saying a lot of those projects in two thousand and eleven just don't seem.
They may not be that, might not be the same priority.
Right, right. So I, I do think it's important to.
And, and some of them, I would say that they're smaller, low hanging fruit. It could have a bigger impact than putting all our eggs into, like the Jackson Street Storm Ram. I mean, that price, that bid came in at three and a half million dollars. Really doesn't affect that any property.
Right.
Uh, and that's a lot. I mean, that's, that's a lot of money to put towards a project. So I am going to bring to you some suggestions, uh, later.
Okay. Evan?
Uh, to circle back around, uh, we didn't have a motion yet, did we?
We have not, no.
I would move to approve the independent contractor agreement with EFG Consulting LLC for professional services resulting in a comprehensive impact fee study, including updated impact fee facilities plan and impact fee analysis.
Thanks. All right, motion from Evan to approve, second from Commissioner Walker. Uh, any other questions for Dan before we vote on this? Comments? All right. All those in favor of the motion, raise your hands. All opposed. Motion passes six to one with Commissioner McCurdy in opposition.
Five to five.
Five to one, I'm sorry. Appreciate it. Uh, bas- basic math. It's that time of night. Um, all right, we're on to agenda item nine, authorization of the county commission administrator selection, administrator selection subcommittee to work with admin and offer the position to preferred candidate. So, um, so we've had a subcommittee that's worked.
So um so we've had a subcommittee that's worked on this, we've kind of narrowed our selection down to three candidates. Uh we'll call them candidates A, B, and C, I think you all know who uh. We are discussing and uh I think I would posit that our um. Selection committee, we we it it's pretty close between candidates A and B, and I think that uh. Our subcommittee kind of decided that candidate A has got a got a slight lead and that I think. In my mind is is probably the the right candidate, but I would uh like to hear from you guys.
I'm I'm in agreement with the assessment. Jock just made, I mean, I ca- I came to the same spot. Three top candidates A, B, and C and placed them in a similar spot that Jock did.
Thanks, Bill.
I I would support that, I I really struggled, I think A and B are very, very, very close, but I'm I'm good with that placement.
Awesome, can I'm 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 fine delegating to the committee, you know, the making of the offers as long as you all are unanimous or near unanimous agreement.
I I I think, yeah, I I I'd speak to the, I think the committee worked very well together, um and I I think uh there was very little disagreement. I think I think everything kind of came together, I would I would totally agree with Trish's assessment, the candidates A and B are pretty close. And um should it not work out with with one, I'd I'd feel comfortable um making an offer to to the other.
Yeah, I would ju- uh just in terms of the process, when. I don't know how many previous administrators, uh there was, uh we had one who retired. And there was a lot of like internal interviews, and I think the commission played a bigger role in that, and I think it was just because um. There was so many relationships already established that it was uh beneficial to have. Um all seven of us weighing in, and I think with um. All of these folks being from outside of the organization. We're all kind of like taking a gamble on on. Who they are and what they bring, and so I'm also comfortable with uh. You know, I've reviewed the applications and the videos, but I wasn't directly involved in the one on one. And I am comfortable with the uh. Committee's assessment that.
Okay, great, thank you, I would uh I'd entertain a motion on on this if someone would care to make one. Kevin.
Move to authorize the commission administrator selection subcommittee to work with Grand County Administration. Grand County Personal Services Staff to extend appropriate offers to top candidates applying for the commission administrator position.
Thanks, Kevin.
I'll second that.
All right, motion on the table from Commissioner Walker, second from Commissioner Dean, um any any further conversation on this before we call for a vote? Got Commissioner McCurdy back timely. All right, uh so we've got a motion from Commissioner Walker uh. And a second from Commissioner Dean um. In favor of uh candidate A. Candidate B. Okay, all those in favor of the motion, raise your hands. And the motion passes unanimously, six to nothing. All right, we're on to our consent agenda, which today consists of um. Real quick, uh item A, approval of meeting minutes for August twentieth twenty one. Uh meetings, that was our regular meeting and our our special meeting with the Trail to Tomorrow Committee. Uh ratification of payment of bills and those bills in the amount of um. Ratification of payment and bills, uh total bills in the amount of one million thirty seven thousand nine hundred five dollars and eighty eight cents. Total payroll in the amount of three hundred ninety eight thousand eight hundred eleven dollars and twenty four cents for total bills and payroll. In the amount of one million four hundred thirty six thousand seven hundred seventeen dollars and twelve cents. Um. Uh consent agenda item C, volunteer board appointment for the Thompson Springs Special Service Water District, and that is on consent because there's only one applicant. And it uh they were approved unanimously, um item D, Grand County search and rescue drone purchase. Item E, extension of the existing grand and San Juan County interlocal agreements for the Mud Springs Trail System. Uh I'll call for, or I'm sorry. Thanks, Kevin. Second from McCurdy, all right, uh all those in favor of approving the consent agenda as presented, raise your hands. And the motion passes five to nothing with Commissioner Winfield absent. Okay, we are on to discussion items. Our first discussion item today is item eleven, that is the USU contract extension and additional funding requirements. And I will turn it over to our uh county attorney, Stephen Stocks. And I'll I'll excuse myself for just one second.
No one else can leave.
Right.
We barely have four months, so um a bit ago, a few weeks ago, I sent out an email that broke all of this down. We had a conversation with. Mike or Mark from USU that indicated to us that they've had difficulties trying to fill the position, that the salary is not advantageous enough. That they had a false start. Where they had somebody that worked the position for like three months, and now they have an awkward period of time of like two point seven. Years, um and so they find that it's kind of difficult to hire. So we're in the middle of the contract, um originally was entered in on October twenty, or October eighteenth twenty twenty two. And so they're at a crossroads, they're more than happy to return the funds to Grand County. Um. I think we could possibly make the argument that it could fall to a revolving loan fund based on the statement that the commission originally made. That all excess funds, I think that's an argument that we could try to make because it was TRT funds that were used for mitigation. Or if the commission would like, we could try to allocate more funds, um they adjusted some numbers on. Their end about how much they would charge Grand County to manage this position to a lower amount, I can't remember what they called it. But it was a certain percentage of the contract that they received, I guess they can take up to thirty five percent of their award, but they lowered it. So what their push or what their offer is, is they can run the program. They would hire for it, they would put it out and post it, but they would ask the county to put up some more funds to make it a a complete. Uh position again, there's more details in the email that I sent out that kind of explained it. Uh Quinn and Commissioner Winfield and.
Yeah, I didn't go, sorry.
Um I I can't remember who was there, Chrissy Hoffman from my office was there also, um but basically that's it, they're. They're okay either way, they do feel a little bit um disappointed that they haven't been able to get somebody going in this role. And the gentleman that presented to us basically said that he had not yet taken on the responsibility of this position. And uh how they do it is, Quinn can correct me, how they do it is they're essentially responsible for the expenditure of that grant. And so he would step into. That position and take responsibility of it from USU on their end to manage and make sure those funds are spent. Um but there are lots of limitations, so the email breaks it down, I don't have a cure either way, I flagged this for you guys because. Uh it was something that, you know, staff was looking at considering, and I I sent out the email and said, hey commissioners, get involved because it's. Such a unique odd thing. Trish.
So, and I sent this feedback to um Bill and. I've been on the USU campus a long time and and I've been there when this. This position is flourishing and I've been there when it's not. And to me, it flourishes when there is a dean in place that is supervise, you know, basically a supervisor and somebody that expects. Staff to be there from eight to five or whatever, and and the reality is like there is not a dean on the USU campus. There the dean is out of blending and and so he covers multiple campuses. And I just think it's a great position, but I think unless they have a direct supervisor, I think it it's it's. That's my opinion, I mean, I've watched that position roll and roll and roll. And the the time that it was really solid was when there was a solid dean that was supervising those positions. So that's my opinion.
It's just one more note, it would be wonderful. Oh, it's a brilliant discussion, if that wasn't what you guys wanted, it would be good information to know if we were going to cancel. To draft language for the contract to cancel the contract, because I think that's where they want, uh they want some input either way. And we still have a contractual obligation, even though they've pretty much breached because they haven't filled the position, so putting both options out there for fun.
Yeah, I felt like they did a good job of coming in and reinforcing the fact that the. There would be a stronger hand behind this, and if I could be corrected possibly, Stephen Quinn. But I believe the ask was for another seventeen thousand dollars from Grand County. Which would round it out to a three year position, as it was, it's two years and plus or minus whatever months you want to put into there. And for them in the hiring position to be able to round that out would make more sense and and which I agreed with them. But I was very impressed with the two gentlemen, especially the. Presenter and the one that was driving this conversation, that they clearly want to get behind this and that there's a need for it and that. They understand that the previous employee had both let them down and us and that they just had nothing they could do about that.
They also did say, and just adding more points, they also did say uh that they'd be happy to have Grand County uh help. Manage the role, and I I retorted and said, well, you know, the idea of this going with USU is that we could take advantage of your. Uh small business uh network throughout the state, and they they commented on that, that they have, I think, two or three different annual meetings. They require that we put down or that in their budget, they require that training, it's mandatory, I think they put five thousand dollars to go to those two trainings. And so I said, well, why would? Why would we even have done this process if we didn't want you to help us manage it? And so I think they're open to doing either way, I did note um that. Not, uh I'm just being selective, I did note that the county likely would want to be involved in on who uh is hired in the position. So that we can promote uh good collaboration and uh longevity.
Kevin. Was there any discussion around what it might look like uh uh if this funding didn't go through? I know in the past, the position was kind of shared with San Juan County and and the vacancy people from Price have been covering. Is there?
It just killed it, is my understanding.
But I mean, would would Grand County residents have access to those resources in some of the neighboring?
There there wouldn't be a person here in in Grand County that would do it, what they said was. Uh they'd like to provide that opportunity, they really. My question was, is this a three year goal, is this a four year plan? And they basically said, well, if Grand County pushes it, he will do everything he can to help it continue going down the path. Maybe try to have some funding from USU to be provided, so that maybe it'll go longer term. But if it doesn't exist, I don't think they put anybody in this position, and to be honest, there hasn't been somebody in the position for a period of time. This is only a discussion item, so if we're just trying to get input to see what commissioners are.
Yeah, that that was kind of part of my question, with some of those statewide programs that they manage. Um, you know, people could tap into that through a price.
Correct, and I do believe that they commented about that, but you would be traveling, we would be sending somebody to one of those services up there. Or via phone, that there would be a.
Yeah, when I look at the statewide site, it it yeah, Price and or Murnell would be their closest locations, but. I mean, they have a really nice website where you can access and get an appointment with the statewide SBDC, so.
Like a phone appointment or even a Zoom appointment, maybe?
Looks like it, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, go ahead, Stephen.
Is is it an option, do you think, Stephen, to add language that says, you know, the the county commission will be willing to throw in the extra twenty thousand dollars to get it to a three year? But if it's not filled within six months, then we want to cancel it, I mean, that's also an option.
That that is good, they they did know, so some of the other things that they can, they noted they're difficult, the salary range is like capped. It's between seventy and seventy seven. And it it can't go above or below that, and then they have a mandatory fourteen percent um that they give for retirement. And then they have some other restrictions, and if you have to, you have to stay within that grade. And so some of the nuances or the oddities that they were trying to do was they had a a possible candidate in mind for the job. And they were trying to court them, and they said, well, we can't change the salary, but we can maybe change the hours, that candidate's fallen through. I've indicated to them that I think it'd be easier if it was just a forty hour standard work work job. Because the other option was, we'll do thirty two hours and then you can run a consultant business on the side. And for eight hours, and I kind of said that. That gives me a little heartburn, uh but they. They're they're dedicated to something happening and it going forward, and they want to fill it, they have to post it, mandatory minimum posting period is thirty days. So they have to put it out thirty days, and then they have their kind of their. Their range, and the other difficulty that they've found is that seventy to seventy seven thousand, they don't, they haven't found the. Ideal candidate or a super qualified candidate, that's mean to say, but it's kind of what they're looking at, is they're kind of looking at kind of. Somebody that's qualified for the job, if they have like a a doctorate or something, they're not gonna be able to afford them.
Sure.
And especially to move to Moab, that's the other hiccup that they're having, is they had people that were outside this area that. Looked at the housing prices and they opted on, but we could put any contingencies on there, I think they're open. Uh. To sitting, sitting down and coming to the table, their fear was we just wanted to plug on it. And we indicated that, I said, I think the commission wants to do something like this.
Yeah.
I like your idea, Quinn, of throwing it out there, saying, we'll give it a shot and 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 then.
And and that we, that was a discussion, or part of the discussion that we had, was that if we threw a little bit more money at this from the general fund, not from TRTE. Diversification dollars at all, if we threw enough to make it a full three year term as opposed to the remaining two point seven years, it might be more attractive to applicants. But I I agree, if we if we threw, if the commission is willing to throw that money at it. To get it to a three year position, I think that's a strong move on the commission's part, but also I think it's wise to say, you know, if you guys haven't filled this by April, then we're just, we're out.
Yeah, I think that's that that's super reasonable.
And also, does the commission have, does the commission have a desire to have somebody sit on the board? Because that's what I I suggest, maybe have uh the commission be able to do that because. Uh just to make sure we get qualified applicants.
Yeah, I think that'd be great.
What who who's uh? Who's sitting on the board currently? Or 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 what, what's the composition of the board?
Yeah, all USU folks.
Okay.
I I would, if I had to hazard guesses, I would say the gentleman that we interviewed, uh Samantha Campbell would probably be a reasonable. Guess, I mean Commissioner Dean probably knows who's out at uh USU better than I do, but maybe a handful of them, but I did say. Perhaps if you had, you know, local input from folks that are here, like a commissioner or somebody on staff, then maybe you could have a an extra level of protection so that we can.
I think I think it sounds like a great idea, plus it would just keep the commission informed of how it's going, yeah.
And I'd be happy to sit on that, that's what I would. So one of us.
But I I do think that they have a solid interest to move forward, and they're pushing this, they're they're pushing hard to make this happen. Was the way I came away from that meeting.
It started out, it started out not certain what we wanted, it was almost like courting each other, it's like they didn't know if they were in love, et cetera.
So so where are we at, so basically it looks like we're working maybe an action item on the next.
Yeah, so from from this, I haven't seen any commissioner vehemently oppose, perhaps we. Uh Quinn and I will work on an amendment to the contract, my office can, and then we'll bring it before you next commission meeting. And then give that to them so that they can feel comfortable, but they are, they didn't post it, is my understanding is they reposted it.
Okay.
Uh to start that thirty day clock because it's so long.
All right, any other comment on this one? Okay, uh we'll close out that discussion item, it's uh after six o'clock, so we have a second citizens to be heard session. Um so I would open up the floor, uh I'll take folks from the audience here in the room first, raise your hand, come forward, I'll give you three minutes to. Speak, uh and then we'll go to Zoom, or yeah, Zoom, who in the chambers would like to come forward to speak? Anybody here to make comment? Hello. We we just opened our second citizens to be heard comment period, so if you're here to make comment. I'll welcome you forward. Perfect, I'd ask you to introduce yourself and then you can and you can comment and uh please keep your comments as close to three minutes as possible.
Okay, uh I'm Dee Taylor. Just uh noticed you were voting on changes to the land use code, but in. Well, at least on my limited internet capabilities, I couldn't find what those changes were gonna be that you were voting on. Uh I would recommend that you postpone vote on those until we can see what your changes are. Uh another item is, I was here a couple of weeks ago uh on flooding issue. Uh I'd update you uh. Still haven't got any help from the city, so we went around them, got a permit to work in the creek. Got a contractor coming in to do the work. Uh it's gonna be awful expensive for just the landowners down there to put the bill for that, so uh we may. Be asking the county for some help. Or uh. City had been told, telling us that you couldn't work in the creek, you couldn't get a permit from the Corps of Engineers, so I called them up and they said. What are you putting in the creek, I said, we're just taking stuff out of the creek, and they said, you don't need to. What are you putting in the creek? I said, we're just taking stuff out of the creek. And they said, you don't need a permit for that, you can do it right now. Said you'll need a stream alteration permit from the Division of Water Rights. So I called them up and they said, we can get you one in about uh three to four weeks. And we said, is there any way to do it quicker? And they said, yeah, we can give you an emergency verbal one, you can start working in the morning. So it's not near as hard as the city was making it sound like it was, uh so we're just going around the city and gonna do it on our own dime, but we may need some help. We've received whisper two hundred and five thousand. And maybe stretching us a little bit, but we're hoping the city will step up and pay at least to share that, so. We may be back to ask for help on that issue too, so. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else in the chamber uh here to make comment? This citizens to be heard period. Uh yes, ma'am.
You're welcome again.
All right. You know the drill.
Shirley French. As I understand, you're going to be voting tonight on the uh zoning change for the property on Rocky River.
We I'll I'll sorry to interrupt, I don't like to do that, but we actually have already voted on that tonight.
Okay, are you gonna let us know what that vote is?
That vote was uh we denied their uh application and we voted to give them a hundred and eighty days to comply.
Okay, there.
But but feel free to continue with your comments if you'd like.
I think a hundred and eighty days is a little excessive, seeing as how they've had three years to take care of it. So I would urge you to revisit that.
Okay.
Because that's. That's another six months.
Yeah, and that's to co- that is to come into compliance, so at the end of the hundred and eighty days, they should be totally compliant.
I say, I think you should revisit that. We've put up with it for over three years now. And sitting here, I can tell you that uh when the end of that a hundred and eighty days comes. They're not gonna move. They're gonna push it out even further. And I. I just don't understand why things can't be done a little more timely.
Thank you, Shirley.
You're welcome.
All right. Um anyone else here in the chamber would like to make comment? Uh usually we just do ones, but I'll give you, I'll give you another three minutes to speak if you'd like to, hold on a minute.
Can you know more? Speaking of the finances, I was wondering if there's a way that uh private citizens can find out what the uh declaration of the state of emergency for um. Possible funding actually means and where we could potentially um apply. And it's just like for the cleanup purpose at this point, because it is quite overwhelming. And probably in those. Same areas is not able hundred thousand dollars.
Um but uh possibly with our emergency manager, uh Cora Phillips, who works under the Sheriff's Department, but I'm not a hundred percent sure. On that. We could, we could query her and and. Get back to you.
That'd be great.
Yeah.
By email or do you do you want me to leave my, I mean, it does have my email address.
Your new email, uh commission@grandcountayotah.net and then and then.
Also already reached out to Cora, she's just saying, like, right now, everything is um. Being looked at on how funds are being divvied up, but I just wanted to uh see if we as private citizens need to do anything to um say we need some help. Because even though in the bigger picture that I have addressed earlier today, in the meantime, there are a bunch of trees that are just covered and said, and they would all die if we don't clean up down there. Like I said, I don't even know where to start.
Yeah, okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Uh all right, I'll go to Zoom for comment. Is there anyone on Zoom who is here to make comment? Uh Michael Scarta.
Yeah, my name's Michael Scarta. I'm with Namaste Rock. We are um. A looking at the advances in the land use code that you guys are putting forth. Um if there was a component in there that um. Granted better uses or more density and it was based off of water availability. Um I I think that would be uh an advantageous thing to do. There's um. They uh many of the projects that I've seen get granted, um I I mean. I like Utah Raptors, I'll use them as an example because I won't hurt any feelings there. Um but they were granted a. You know, or anyway, they have a campground there, but in some ways it's not an ideal location because the water they have is not of fantastic quality. Um my understanding is they'll have to be using reverse osmosis and so um. That means that a portion of every gallon that they pump out of the ground um is gonna be wastewater. And anyway, it's goes to an evaporation pond and then there's a waste cleanup and an environmental aspect with that. Um but the water that that we have comes out of the ground is 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 quite clean and it doesn't need reverse osmosis. Um and and it makes a better candidate. And I've heard a lot of things talked about. Uh about water, but the land use code doesn't do a lot to reflect uh the quality of the water that comes a grant out of the ground or the quantity of the water. Um and I think that that an ideal management would have an aspect where where there would be a higher use around. Um wells that um are actually producing water and um clean water that doesn't have to be. Uh reverse osmosis um and and that waste and that environmental a- aspect i- improved and so. Uh i- is this, as you're reviewing the land use code, if you could take water. Uh and reverse as most osmosis into a to account, I I think that that could be codized and. Be quite beneficial to to longer, long-term uh health for the whole county. Anyway, thank you.
Thank you, Michael. See, is there anyone else on Zoom who is uh who's there to make comment? Nope. All right, any, I'll do a last call for the chambers here. Anyone who is uh present who would like to come forward to make a citizen comment? All right, it looks like not, so uh we'll close that uh citizens to be heard session and we'll get back to our discussion items. We're on item number twelve. And this is our flood and storm waters project. And I think that, was that uh Steve, were you here for that? And Dan, I think? Okay, Dan was gonna drive the bus on that one, right?
Yeah, Dan was just gonna jump on.
Okay. Is uh is Dan on Zoom or? Okay, great. Yeah, great, thank you, thank you, Steve. And this was a, I I I believe Mike, you're the one that asked, yeah, so Mike asked for this to be a discussion item, which is great. I wondered if you wanted to preface.
Preface this as uh I wasn't. Not all commission members were uh allowed to go, uh just to hold my reasons on that. I wanted to catch up because. It wasn't on YouTube, but I already hear that the discussion's going with YouTube or, you know, we can, we can look at this. Uh in the near future, or at least we're trying. Uh so most of my questions will probably be answered by watching the meeting, but also I wanted to include. A lot of influential people were uh in that meeting. Uh I knew who was down or tasked. Uh with being there, I I thank you for our commissioners being there. Thank you for our state representatives, our emergency management, everyone uh for being part of it. But I really personally feel that in this discussion. Why wasn't uh San Juan County present and talking about the south end of our valley that affects stormwater? Somewhat there. Uh I don't have a, I I reached out to my contacts to see if they were involved. I haven't got an answer back. I just didn't know, but.
Yeah, I don't know. I mean, I I would assume it was Cora that prompted this meeting, but you know, I think it was just like trying to kind of. Really just process what was happening, where everybody was at. I don't think it was starting to make decisions, if that makes sense. And so the the broader, I think it was just like, where are we at? Where where is USGS as far as um our gauges where, you know, is? So so that's the way I viewed it. Um I don't think any decisions were made. People were just kind of disseminating information.
Yeah, and I don't think there's, there's certainly no intent it's like with San Juan County at all. I think the.
And no, I wasn't expecting San San Juan, I I just in few, seeing that we can talk about the meeting. Together now, I would like Commissioner McCurry them included in this. Uh more uh this direct uh talk.
Well, I think. Well, maybe when Dan comes, I mean, I think if we propped um getting that updated stormwater drainage plan in place. San Juan County is gonna have to be a part of that, right? Because there are gonna be components of that in San Juan County, I agree.
Stephen, you wanted to.
Just just speaking to the recording aspects, we recorded the, we reported it, we wanted to make it available. Somebody asked us to publish it. I said, as a matter of courtesy, we circulated to make sure everyone was okay with it being released. People haven't jumped out or responded negatively. Only one person said they didn't care, um but I just wanted commissioners to know, the goal is to put it online, we just wanted people to uh have that opportunity. To object to being posted online, that's why I didn't mean to make it a a moot point, but didn't know we were gonna talk about it.
You okay, Dan?
Sorry, Dan.
I don't know why my password was. Oh, shoot. Well, thank you for for coming first again.
All right, you're only the second person to this meeting to come running through.
Well, maybe you could give, you could give Janet and a can, a chance to catch his breath.
Uh yeah.
I I think s- something, I think it would be useful to discuss, we touched upon this a little bit in the the previous discussion, but. You know, yes, it'd be nice to update this twenty eleven plan, but you know, our topography hasn't changed. And you know, we're not gonna get something radically different, I think, and other. Important aspects of the subject that can happen in parallel is how much can we afford to spend on flood mitigation? What's our budget? You know, what's our budget if we bond for it or increase taxes or something? You know, that that kind of discussion I I think is important. Um you know, how does how does this play with our other needs for capital projects? Like if we. Go really hard on flood mitigation, does that mean we need to slow down law enforcement building or county office building or county to all level one? So those those are financial questions. Um it'd be good to, you know, we're not gonna get a precise answer, but we could, right now, I don't even know approximate answers to those. Um and and I think another important thing is just the of. I don't know, not prioritization, but you know, the philosophy of prioritization, like it's been pointed out a few times that if you look at. Our flood mitigation spending over the past several years, a very large chunk of it went to the Jackson Street Reservoir. Very expensive project. If you look at it on the map, that that drainage basin doesn't affect very many properties. As far as I know, it 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 got done first because it flooded and closed one ninety-one just before the decisions were made. So everyone said, hey, let's do this. But it hasn't flooded since then. So it's not, it that to me, that that feels, I mean, I'm not saying any. You know, the these are difficult decisions to make and I'm not criticizing anyone. I don't know who made the decision to do it at first, but. I I think in hindsight, it's better maybe not to put all our eggs in one basket, you know, to look at, because we don't know where the next big downward is gonna hit. But we know there are places in the valley that are getting hit multiple times a year, even by moderate thunderstorms. And I kind of think maybe we should start paying more attention to those rather than. Something that's gonna benefit us fifty years from now, but not very much. I think that's a good point. Uh Bill, let's hand up and we'll go back to Dan.
I I think to the financial aspect of it and prioritizing our capital projects as we speak about that here is that we've got to start prioritizing our citizens over. Anything else, especially in this flooding nature. And I really think that on the financial side of this, now that we have a financial expert at hand here. That to say that we do want to put five million dollars towards this flooding issue. To put some kind of model together for us as to what's that capable of bonding? Where where do we go with whatever X amount of dollars we want to put towards flooding? And when we say we've been putting four hundred thousand dollars a year towards it. I could show areas that we're putting way too much money towards when we could be putting more towards flooding and I I don't, I'm not gonna drag those up. I'm just saying, let's use a financial expert to give us some kind of a model that if you plug in X amount of dollars, we can bond for this and we can start working. This this flood issue has to start at the portal by Kane Creek Boulevard and it has to go all the way out to the end of the map. Valley of Blue Hills out there and come back around and end at the bridge. There's no one specific spot and. The the Jackson Street model, it was just last year that again, that because it hasn't been completed yet, flooded the entire. South Maverick. So even though it was put, money had put aside to try and correct that, it hasn't been done yet. There's still issues and we don't know if the next flood's gonna hit Pack Creek. Or what creek it's gonna, but we've got to start dealing with every single drainage in this valley. And we have to work on something rather than just hoping the four hundred thousand dollar Band-Aid is gonna fix the. Aloni just said that two hundred thousand dollars is gonna be required to clean up the area down by Helena and Mr. Taylor, so. Uh I think using you two gentlemen, I know Dan spoke up to the fact that we're looking at. Hundred and fifty plus million dollars to start working towards flood mitigation. But if we do that at four hundred thousand dollar increments, I think you're wasting everybody's time. We've got to get serious about it. We need somebody to put a financial model together. We need somebody to start giving us some direction. And start down the list because we currently aren't starting down the list and we can't keep voting, no. On flood mitigation issues because, well, it might not flood in that area. We, it doesn't matter. We've got to work through every one of these and and. Have an outcome here.
All right.
That doesn't result in what we've had.
Thanks, um I'm gonna turn it back to Dan.
Before I go to Dan, I want to say like my objective here is to take this list that Dan has got so many. So much documentation about plans that have been done, so does Cora, you know, and emergency response plan. So we got all of this good work done with you, Bill. We have two point five million dollars in our eighteen, Fund Eighteen for water, stormwater mitigation. And we put in Florida each year, so there is some money even available there. So my goal is to say, where can we spend money to give the most benefit for our citizens and and start taking action?
Uh that was my just, my exact point, bank of the buck. Yeah, uh let's, I mean. We're sitting, we're not flush with money, we're sitting okay. Grand County.
So.
Yeah, go ahead, Dan.
Well, I I put together a really brief little PowerPoints and I'm really sorry, I'm technically challenged. I don't know why it wasn't letting me. Enter my email and my password in Zoom, it's the same one I use. So I ran over here without that, but what I was gonna do is, one, you know, I just was notified of this on Friday afternoon to say, you know, you want to have a discussion, so. I can definitely bring back to you a lot more specific information, numbers, maps, whatever. It takes time to put that together and a good presentation format. Um I'm certainly willing to do that. Um I'd like some direction feedback from you on what you want to see with regard to that, if that's where we want to go. Some of the talking points that I had pushed out to Jacques earlier today. Um and you can talk on is, I can just give you a brief report on the storm concad this year where they've hit the hardest. Give you some context on where those storm events. Compared to the statistical hundred-year storm events and past events that that I know that Moab has has encountered, the valley here has encountered. In about the last seventy years. I could talk to those things. I could also talk, I went out to think about five or six different property owners last week. Um just at their request, calling, saying, you know, can, and and I would like to say. First of all, that flooding is is perhaps the most catastrophic thing that can happen to your property. I think it's even worse.
I think it's even worse than fire because fire, at least you have a little bit more time, usually not always, but sometimes. And usually you have better insurance to cover it. Um, with flooding, it's just, it's coming fast. There's definitely nothing you can do. It causes huge mass damage and very few people have flood insurance in the valley. So your homeowner's insurance, your whatever vehicle insurance law is not going to cover any of that. So you're on your own and that's unfortunate. So it definitely was heartbreaking to go out to people's properties and look at stuff with them. And listen to them. So I could talk about some of those. I could talk about, um, we had a meeting, Trish was there, Mary, Commissioner McGann and Stephen and some other people last Wednesday, and we talked about some projects we want to budget for the next construction, the next, say, 24 months, um, looking at the balance that we currently have in that stormwater mitigation fund and looking at some more low hanging fruit, perhaps, and what we can do. Um, I can give you that shortlist of projects.
Yeah. Was shortlist of project, me, or me? Was Phil Jackson the one?
Yes, he was. Yeah, he's.
The positive is Bill already had some things in the works, budgeted for next year, for example, Chapman and Heather. And so we already had those slated. And so whether, I guess you, you actually saw the videos of how much water was moving and it changed by now. But some of that stuff is already in the works for this year.
Um, and then talking about, you know, bigger picture, what role does the county want to play? What responsibility does the commission want to take on? What price tag, what level of service do we want to offer to our citizens? Um, and, and I can tell you what some of the other potential funding mechanisms that other communities use are. Try some on that. So you guys tell me what you want to focus on in the next hour long you want to be here.
Okay. Uh, Kevin. Yeah, I, I, I think all of the topics you mentioned sound really interesting to me, but, but I wanted to comment on something. You know, I guess our floodwater mitigation fund that Stephen mentioned has come up. But, you know, we can easily transfer money into or out of that. So I, I don't think we should, you know, some commission several years ago decided that, you know, we're going to put away $400,000 a year. That was a probably arbitrary decision. We don't know if that's too much or too, you know, I don't think it's too much.
Like the last six years.
Six years, okay. Yeah, it was. But, you know, we could, we could do more. And we have, we have money and we have taxing authority. We just have to decide, you know, how, how much, you know, when does it cease to be worthwhile? So I, I, I don't think we should view that, did you say it was $2.7 million as, as a ceiling?
That's the balance we have about money.
Yeah. And, and I think Bill touched on this as well. I think there's, there's bonding. We could do an expensive project now, now and pay for it over the next, you know, 20 or 30 years if we want to is another option.
And I think the idea that Chris Barrett had with starting that was that it would be used as like match money, seed money, Chase Grant. I will say that, that the CIB has ratcheted down a little bit in terms of what they're funding. And it's also a regional formula and Kane Creek Project Moab City has, has definitely allocated Grand County this region share of CIB money for a while. Um, not to say that that can happen. We currently have the Jackson Street base two on CIB list for both loan and grant. Touch on that, but, um, that's, that's one of the primary sources of funding for storm drainage. There's not a lot of specific, um, projects. The, the bigger ones, the federal ones right now, like the BRIC grant or the RACE grant are significantly larger and they can both be applied towards flood protection infrastructure, I believe. Those grants have a lot of strings attached. There's a lot of hoops to jump through to try and qualify for those, but that's a possibility to chase those as well.
Evan? Um, just, just another funding idea to throw out there. Um, something we've seen the state legislature do twice in the last session is take an existing tax and expand the things you can spend it for. So that, you know, there was, earlier this meeting, there was a real hospital tax and now that can be used for an expanded list of purposes. There was also a transportation tax, which now also complete, you know, unlocked for some purposes. And it's always seemed a little weird to me that the state legislature is very generous in funding B roads, but they won't fund like a flood mitigation project, you know, upstream of the road that might wash the road out. And I think a very simple ask would be to say, yeah, all this B road money, you know, it's local. Your counties can also decide to spend it on flood control. You could ask for that or we could talk to our lobbyists to see what would go. But I think there are probably communities around the state that would like to have additional funding options for flood mitigation projects. So maybe we could loosen up, you know, gain some additional flexibility. Oh, yeah. Good point. Mike, uh,
not have seen, uh, the current meeting. Who do we have representing state or?
Oh, came from the state?
Yeah. And what were their, I mean, what were their thoughts? What was? Yeah, just, I mean, the 24th.
But UDOT was there. There, there were multiple different agencies from the state, some from the federal that were talking about the BRIC grant and the RACE grant that you just mentioned. But I know UDOT was very involved. SIP was not at that meeting.
It was a handful of people from Department of Emergency Management, State Flood.
USGS.
What? USGS.
Yep.
And not to need that information. I mean, I will watch the Hope to Soon video here, but, uh, what were their views? What, what were they recommending for? I mean,
I mean, I can.
In the end of this, government moves slow.
Right.
My thoughts are move a heck of a lot faster.
I have some notes. Do you want me to? Yeah, I have a few notes that might hit on some things. Um, they did say there's a House bill and I could be wrong on this number, so please excuse. There was a House bill passed that was funding for snowpack flood mitigation. When we had that really heavy year, was it, was it last winter or two winters ago? Um, USGS said they are, they are putting money into gauge enhancements. Um, it, those, those gauges aren't meant for flood warning systems, but they can set up alerts, right? But basically they said, I think he was talking about the left hand. And he said it'd be really hard to get it to a position where it's not just going to be taken out. Is my understanding what Chris said. So that was, you know, the reality is those gauges have to be, you know, brought up. We, we do as a county support, I know the Pack Creek gauge, we pay, we helped put it in and we pay for it yearly. I, I can't remember what he was saying about the gauge right below Shealy Tunnel. I know the BLM has been paying.
BLM has been paying for that. The current contract expires this year.
Right. I was.
They see whether they want to.
Yeah, I was kind of working on, you know, because we had heard tell and the last that I remember is the BLM was going to keep, keep paying for it for a while. Yeah. So, um, there's this big watershed mapping project going on, um, and we're really waiting for that. I think he, they said it would, should be done by the end of 2024?
I think the initial data collection, yeah.
Right. Um, and so, so, and that's, the state said they're doing a large scale flood risk analysis. Uh, that's through, uh, Department of Emergency Services. Trying to think of stuff that, so everybody was just kind of pinging on, I wouldn't say that there again was anything like hard. We're doing this, we're doing this. I mean, we did get those, you know, the state is working on those large scale things, but, um,
Yeah, that's true. Let me just, I've been there. And from my perspective, there are so many, I've, I've got a list here of just participating in these meetings. Over 50 items. So the trick is not identifying these items, but to, to focus on those that are really going to create a benefit.
Make the biggest difference right away.
We got to get to that point.
Yeah. And that's why I guess, Dan, to me, it's like, you know, do you feel you can give that list or do you feel, you know, we need to institute that study as a as quickly as possible, as possible, and then we can be building off of that?
I think that we, between myself and Bill Jackson, also some, talking to some property owners, we could easily come up with a list of $10 million worth of projects that are talking about, um, which is way more than we have to spend now. But, you know, I don't think we have to wait for a plan. And, and to touch on Kevin's thing, the reason Jackson Street got prioritized, as in the 1997 plan, it was listed as the top priority project. Now, the formulation, the matrix that they use to prioritize maybe wasn't the best. Maybe isn't what we want to consider. It was heavily weighted towards the state highway and it was heavily weighted towards commercial buildings. So so that's why it rose to top was the only one that achieved the number one ranking out of eight, one through eight out of 40 projects. Yeah.
And I want to, I wanted to say something during this. It is very hard, as I'm speaking to our guests at house here. Uh, it's very hard to say what I'm about to say. It is, we know your land is getting flooded. But when I look at making a $10 million choice right now, with it just being property, if human life was in danger, I would be more concerned. But in making a 10 million, I'm going to make or try for the choice as fast as possible for the most amount of people. And that's what I said, when I meant bank for the buck. I want to know quickest, the quickest, the mo- most available now, uh, timeline, uh, biggest projects. It, it, in the last five years, I've lived here my whole life, it's gotten significantly worse in the flooding. I foresee that in the future. Or I can only plan to hope to affect it in the nearer future than the, uh, longer future. But when you, I'm not saying I need that list today, but we need it sooner. I would hope for, be working on that. Prioritization and cost analysis, I mean, hand in hand, together with what's going to give us now and for the dollar.
Well, I like this, I like this guidance here. First, the, the biggest bank for the most people. At least that's a parameter we could use or, you know, because Dan, you probably have all these engineering parameters that we should apply. What can we do for the most people in the quickest amount of time?
I think the other dimension you had is the, um, is the, is the areas most likely to be impacted. So the most high, highest frequency areas.
So a couple of things that I'll, that I'll put out there that are timely decisions that you need to weigh in on. The statewide efforts to identify flood plain mapping and all, so that was precipitated by the, the heavy snowfall year that we had. Legislature freed up some money for Department of Bridge Management. It said, let's do some high level stuff throughout all of Utah. We've got to cover the whole state. Grand, Emory and Carbon Counties were the first three counties that got funded. So, so this year we're, we're funded for that. And what that is looking at is basically looking at high level mapping, on the ground reports, interviewing road departments and all, and finding the areas that are prone to flooding. And that's sort of creating some kind of matrix to decide, do we want to include them as special flood hazard areas and all that comes with that? So right now, our special flood hazard areas that we have, which are theme designated areas are as a hundred year flood plain for the Colorado River, Mill Creek, Pack Creek. That's pretty much it. Um, city has some areas that are for alluvial flooding out of, um, like down Second South, uh, I think that's called Tusher Canyon above there. Maybe there's a couple of fingers that are alluvial flooding in addition to those, the creek flooding. The county, as a, as a, as a member of National Flood Insurance Program, we can adopt stricter state, those are the minimum criteria. Minimum criteria. So the hundred year flood plain associated with perennial waterways is the criteria. So we can adopt more. We could adopt all sorts of areas that we know flood and we could have them designated as special flood hazard areas. And with that comes the restrictions that, that go with those standards, you know, it really limits what you can do. Have construction, has a build to elevation to our building, um, all those sorts of things that, that we talked about with respect to Kane Creek. That's not necessarily going to be popular with those landowners. It's not necessarily giving them relief. It's more of a management tool for the county to minimize or try and reduce overall damage costs than it is to benefit those individual landowners. Most of them would probably not like to be under those positions. Can't speak for everybody, but most likely, most people not wanting the project to be subject to standards. But, but that is an option and we will be given that opportunity. But this mapping thing is to say, what do we want to focus on? What do we want to designate Grand County as our mapped flood hazard areas that then are going to go through that whole process and earn that status?
And then is, was that specific to snowmelt or is it just flooding in general?
No, I think the flooding that came from the snowmelt was one of the things, because there was a lot of creek flooding that was resolved in high creek flows and snowmelt. I think that would precipitated this funding that went.
Okay, it was just about flooding in general?
Yes, flooding in general. There was some emergency funds that were allocated last year. And we actually got a little bit, it was kind of a rage, but we did, for some emergency repairs we did to, um, the low water crossings at Kirby and Sponti Park. That got reworked. It was relatively minor, 20,000. Yeah. But no, this is looking at, it's just anything that, you know, the, the mapping technology now has gotten to the level where you can do these large scale projects now. It's just a matter of huge data crunching and then pick out, you know, areas that are bowline and looking at those individually and saying, this is from flooding system.
And is it, so you're saying we could designate them? But then there's more restrictions on the property owners. Is there a way that we could use the, that data into the prioritization algorithm that you mentioned? Where we say, you know, instead of highways and commercial, we're going to prioritize the 500 year or include these other alluvial flood zones? Would that necessarily, uh, that, that would affect land use, building sort of things? Like, we kind of have parallel plans that didn't necessarily dictate on each other?
Right. And that, that statewide one, we have a lot of say in what the final outcome of that is. They're going to bring it to us and they're going to say, what? What do you want us to focus on? What do you want us to designate? Because you guys are going to be the enforcement agency once these are in.
And what are the advantages of including more in there?
Advantages of including more are that what can be done in those areas is, it eliminates like fencing, um, most structures unless they're elevated on fill above that level. Um, fortunately it requires, even when you do that, fill elevation all requires an engineering study to make sure that you're not pushing it to someone else or impacting someone else negatively. Um, all those, anything that's financed, property is financed would be required to have mandatory flood insurance. So same sorts of things a lot of people in Moab City right now have done.
And so it's not, there's not necessarily relief besides personal.
Tool that the county has to.
Avoid future problems.
Yeah. Uh, yeah, go ahead, Mike. And then, Bill.
Uh, not to sound hoarse up here, uh, I am not interested in mitigating risk.
Okay.
I, I am interested in, my thoughts are interested in direct action projects, things that will not even stop because you can't do it. Uh, s- slow water, move water, keep property owners safe, keep the public safe. I am more interested in what directly we can put boots on ground, uh, on projects. That's for me.
Bill?
I'd, I'd like to touch on what Evan and you were just talking about a little bit. If we had moved forward with the BRIC grant originally happened with the reservoir out in San Juan County on Pack Creek, that would have removed every single property from the flood plain, once that was installed, which would, which would, most of them on Pack Creek. And those are the kind of projects that we do have to do. There's a result from them. We, we have homeowners that who then are no longer required We, we have homeowners that who then are no longer required to have flood insurance, that, that's just one of the points I wanted to make. The other one is back to Steve. The reason that we want to look at this with how much money we can bond this is, is we're making improvements that are gonna outlive us. And the reason that you bond for projects is so that future generations pay for the benefits of the work that we are doing for them. So that that load gets shared out, so rather than just look at it as we have two and a half million, or three million, or one million, whatever the number, if we can bond for some of these projects, we're providing an impact that generates and a result for future generations. And that's the way that we've got to look on that part of it. Now, back to the meeting that Trish and I were in. I, I also think that the city needs to be a huge part of this conversation. We have got to bring them to the table so that we're all working together. Now, the mayor mentioned that she had three bridges that were of high priority to her, and there were people that had a disagreement of which of those three bridges should be happening first. Well, I think that we need to work with those and with the city to come up with a plan that what alleviates bottom end first. I, I understand the, the need to get the bottom opened up so that there's somewhere for the water to go, because right now it just goes sideways everywhere. And so I, I think we've got to find a way for the city and the county to be involved in this plan, because even if it's flooding the city residents, the water's coming from the county, some of it's coming all the way from San Juan County, hence the need to have them here. And so I, I, I just think that to get that collaboration between our two entities to start with, and then working with the other county, the county is important as well, and then I, I, I think there's a huge amount of knowledge and expertise that Bill Holtz can provide as the floodplain administrator as we're moving forward. And the meetings that happen outside of the commission. I, I think there's far more expertise outside of, well, I know there is outside of the commission than there is in it. So, to, to utilize him as well would seem key and imperative to me also.
Yeah, he's been, he's been pretty involved in all the discussions.
And I figured that he was.
And I worked closely. Um, I mean, uh, not to oversimplify the, the situation, but most, most of the water that we see causing flooding things is not coming from developed planes. Most of it is coming from, from off the croplifts that surround valley, um, off of the steep sides of the valley itself. So, so just, you know, putting the blame on whose, whose water is that, is, is, it's probably moot argument, right? It's more of like, who are we gonna protect? That, than that, and, and there's a perception that development in the, in the county, the valley, has caused all these problems. And some of that is true in small areas. Probably the bigger thing is that development has been built in areas where the water historically has flown. When we have these really big events, been able to spread out, go through someone's alfalfa field, that now is, you know, twenty homes or something like that. Or we've crisscrossed those drainage with roadways that now is like intercepting and routing. Like, I don't know how, how we're, the highway corridor you guys are, but then impromptu U T V track that's been developed alongside, parallel in the highway, has become a major drainage conduit that intercepts like all those culverts that come out of the highway there and then route it, and then where it hits someone's driveway, it spills down their driveway. And I don't, whose fault is that, I don't know how to place the blame on that, but it's definitely altered the drainage scene of what we see, so there's, there's, there's an issue with, with county is the entity, the county and the city are the government entities that span enough area that you can be the ones to bring the parties together to do something, but, but it comes with a huge cost. There's a huge cost, it probably, it's getting tight now, but it probably would be less expensive for the county to purchase all of the heavily impacted properties right now. Take them off, off, take them out of the formula, just say, we're gonna purchase them, they're gonna be floodways, floodways, than it is to try and protect them. So, from a, from a big picture money standpoint, that might be.
Right.
So, it's not the most palpable, that's not the most palpable thing, and that would be very difficult to do, but that might be the least expensive alternative. The number of properties that are getting hit really badly, it's a lot, I don't want to belittle what that amount is, but as a percentage of the total property value of Grand County, it's not that big. City's a little bit different, city, city has more, but if we're looking at just outside of corporate limits, it's not a huge chunk. So, make of that one clear.
Yeah, no, that's, that's really interesting, Dan.
I think we should hope, get, get some focus back, like, you know what I mean, we could sit here all night, so.
Uh, yeah, speaking of, I just wonder if we should have a target for when we wrap this up?
Yeah, and, and, you know, if, if Stephen can get what they want.
We could even do a workshop on this at a future commission meeting, I think, um.
I'd, I'd like to touch on some things that are related to citizens, just so you guys.
Okay, yes, thank you.
Because I've been out and visiting with people, and they're like, what can we do, what's the county doing, and I, and I want to, so in the last weekend storm, the twenty-three, twenty-four, it, by far the biggest impacted area and, and unincorporated area was the wash that parallel Spanish Valley Drive that comes off of Johnson's Up on Top, um, and kind of crosses Chapman, Heaven, Lane, Easy Street, that area. That was, for those of you, if you haven't looked, that thing was flowing like two hundred feet wide. Mind boggling, mind boggling how much water accumulated in that, that area. Completely inundated some properties along there, flooded some structures, not too many, but definitely some structures, no buildings, some got flooded. So, we already had budgeted and planned to do upsizing and replacing the culverts at Chapman and Heaven. In, in next year's budget, at two, no, about two hundred fifty thousand each thing. Having seen that storm and the evidence of it, the, the six by ten box culverts that we were planning on putting in there based on our storm range master plan would not have carried that event. Now, they would have carried a lot more of that event and caused less spread over those areas, but it may not have been the cure all. And that's half a million dollars between those two, that would not necessarily have been the cure all for those properties. Probably the only cure all for those is to do a very large basin up at the base of Johnson's Up on Top, on the Sittla property there, right where the road goes and access to Johnson's Up on Top is. Uh, you know, when I say large, it'd be on the order of like a hundred acre. So, you know, that's, that's twenty-five acres, four feet deep, like a large, large amount. I did reach out to Sittla and ask if they would entertain an easement for that, I'm working down that pathway, but, you know, that, that would actually probably be the cheapest alternative that combined with the culverts. But I did talk to those owners along there, several of those owners along the other ones I visited, and just said, we are gonna replace the culverts that's been budgeted. We're working towards it after the first storm, so they've, that wash, according to the landowners there, floods roughly about once every, over the tops of the road, about once every ten years, maybe. It's done it three times, four times, four times this summer. So, so that's one thing that we're looking at, along Spanish Valley Drive, and I think you guys are aware of this, but the pathway project incorporates quite a bit of storm drainage improvements from a Royal Crossing down. Thirty inch diameter storm drain that basically comes all the way from like the Royal Crossing area all the way down to Packers Distribution area there, which will address a lot of that water that's sheeting across Spanish Valley Drive and hitting all those downstream properties on that end. It's proving to be a very complex thing to shoot aren't in there with the water lines and gas lines, other things that are in that area. It's, it's moving slowly as a result of all the issues that we're trying to work it around, and we still have some right away stuff, but that is probably a one point four million dollar project that I've earmarked money out of the stormwater mitigation for. There is Boulder Avenue is, has been historically a very hard hit area on down, it's highway and stuff. Previous landowner up at the top of Boulder, where the, we have two small detention basins was, was not interested in giving us any more land to enlarge those basins, they're fairly small. That property sold recently, the new landowner is willing to talk to us about potentially enlarging those basins, um. We'll see. But mixed, mixed initial conversations with him on that, I don't know how we're gonna pursue it, but but that still would need some kind of conveyance system to get that water all the way through down Boulder, across Main Street, down to Pack Creek. You do have easements for the lower end of that, down Antiquities Lane, through like bricks glass area there, all that, um. That's something that we've looked at, maybe trying to at least get that in the ground, to get that started. Try and get some momentum on that project. But really, the key thing is being able to intercept more of it that's coming down off the hillsides and then convey it some, it's down, over Avenue. The Jackson Street Storm Grain Outfall, we're planning on putting that back out to bid this month. You know, the price tag came in at over three and a half million, I frankly don't think it's worth it, that. For the amount of properties that it benefits, any amount of relief it gives, I think it's just not, it's not worth it. We have earmarked a billion of our Storm Grain Mitigation Fund to use towards that, it's match for that C I P stuff. Bill and I talked about what's the highest we're willing to go, if it comes back in, you know, the bits come back in, what's the, what's the upper threshold that we'd be willing to award that? It's tentatively I should discuss this, this might be bitters, but we said enough. And, and said, you know, if it comes in under that, it's worth it, if it's not, we could certainly have that conversation with some commissioner to meet here, whether or not we're gonna run it out. But that right there, those four or five projects take up the balance that we have. That with the, with the updated national line, take up the fund that we have right now in our balance, um. I think there was one other little one. Oh, oh, Bill wanted to buy, um, some equipment.
Oh, the hydro back, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Um, can we share that with the city, is that right?
Yes, city already.
I think he thought the city already had one.
But, yeah.
I, I will say that equipment operators sharing their equipment is not politicians like that.
Gotcha.
Yeah, he wasn't that down.
Bill could probably speak, you know.
He probably wouldn't, wouldn't roll in like right now, the city, they could probably couldn't really share.
Right, yeah. Um, you can impose that on him, Bill will always do what the commission tells him. Great.
Kevin? So I just wondered if we want to make plans for continuing the discussion and, right? No, I think this, this has been a great table setter for sure, and getting, kind of getting everyone on the same page and it whatnot, but it's definitely, obviously, it's something that we're gonna need to continue to discuss at length, future commission meetings.
I would be willing, and I would like, and I think there's value in talking, and I, I've met with, like I said, five or six property owners, but talking to some people in areas where we know there's problems and getting firsthand eyewitness accounts of, of what's happening, maybe what's changed. I mean, a lot of that's fairly obvious, but sometimes it's, I, you know, Catherine Polio corralled earlier today when we were talking about Jackson Street, said, that's not the problem there, it's this one right next to it, that's, you know, a whole bunch of things, so sometimes there's that aspect of things, like the
Like Lynn Sorenson.
Drainage that's come down and hammered white horse and on down Easy Street, it's not even mapped.
Right.
On our thing.
And Lynn Sorenson would be a good one, because he's been there for forty years, and he does have kind of this history, and he, he told me what he thinks the problem is, but I don't.
Right. But they also sometimes are part of the problem.
Right.
They try and put culverts in so they can access the other side of the creek for their land, that causes a problem. They want to get as much of their real estate as possible, so they fill, inch it down, might work for eight, nine years.
Yeah. I did want to, you, um, you just mentioned the idea that completing the second phase of Jackson Street might not be worth the money, you know, depending on where the bids come in. I just wonder how, as a, you know, as a county, we should, you know, it seems like if there are more effective ways to spend that money, then we should spend them, you know, on more effective flood control rather than something that's less effective, um, I mean, how, how are we gonna make that decision?
I didn't mean to interrupt, uh, it sounded like you had, or from the two thousand eleven um, plan, that there was some kind of algorithm that prioritized some of these projects, and that uh, with the changes in the valley and change in priorities, um, maybe there's adjustments to how those projects are scored?
Right, so ninety-seven, which is the one where Boulder was the top priority, was based uh, damage, which, not sure exactly what, like, uh, commercial building inundation, residential building inundation, inundation of streets, uh, and then there was, those were weighted factors, and there was a you know, D plus C plus R plus S thing, kind of weighting factors applied, and then given a score.
And do, do you think there are metrics missing from that, do you think that there, they, it's just a matter of?
Skewed towards inundation of streets and commercial buildings in that case, but maybe that's, I mean, those, I guess it kind of depends on what we deem to be.
I guess that's kind of, I'm on a similar, like, what do we deem, you know, it sounds like we've already got some low hanging fruit or some identified things that, um, you know, there's monies in the budget to start attacking now, but, um, as we, you know, without necessarily updating a whole entire list and hiring contractors to put together a new plan for us, maybe we can just take some of the data we have and rearrange it in a way that kind of meets today's needs rather than decades past.
But I guess I was proposing something simpler, if there's, if there's two or three other projects that we think are a better use of X million dollars than Jackson Street pays to, and it makes sense to do those first and wait on Jackson. I, I guess another thought, Jackson, if it's, if one of its main benefits is protecting the highway, you would think we'd be able to get some state funding to do that. You know, it's a federal and state highway, why, why should the county be bearing the brunt of protecting and keeping it open? Yes, you have to own down the road, there might be other ways to fund that.
I, I will say, best mechanism for funding storm drainage systems, and it's pretty widely used by municipalities, not so much by incorporated counties, is to create a utility, so stormwater utility, and charge monthly utility fee for stormwater. The city, MOA, has that, when I was city inspector, I did that back in two thousand eight. And I, any of you that live in the city and look at your bills, it's up to, I think, nine dollars a month, um. That is a city's stormwater utility fee that everyone pays. Commercial, it's based on, so residential, it's, it's a flat fee. Commercial is based on your, your amount of previous area, so if you're part of lots and stuff like that, pay by your fee. Less previous area, it's more. That's used extensively throughout Utah, those fees vary, just, I did a quick poll today, I'm looking at some counties along the Muscat Front, seems like they range anywhere from five dollars a month to twenty dollars a month, um, depending on the drainage base. That would make more sense to define a storm drainage area, Spanish Valley, and the fees levied on people in the valley. Because, let's face it, we're probably not gonna be spending that money on storm drainage projects from Thompson or for Cas Valley or for outlaw areas, you know, and so arguably, they could say, well, not getting any benefit from that. Aside from maybe clear roads down the city or something like that. But that gives But that gives you a good bonding mechanism because you have a steady stream of income. So bonding, when you're looking at bonding projects, you can show we have a fee based. Stream of income that will only increase basically, right? And it can't go down. It's this fee based thing. That's a good tool. And that's how the the city and UDOT were able to combine and do all that extensive drainage work on the north end. At Moab a few years ago when that happened. I don't know if you remember that. It was like a five foot diameter storm drain line that went into the street. It's a big basin of, I think that was about a three and a half million dollar project. And that was funded with that fee, part of part. The logistics of of implementing that on a countywide basis would be tricky because we don't run any other utilities. So it's not like we have a utility fee to add it on to. That's the easiest way to do it, but but that's. A good mechanism and it arguably is more fair than than property tax levy. You know, you could argue property tax, you know, second homeowners, commercial businesses are paying a much higher rate than than primary. But arguably, they're not having any less impact on flooding or immediate flood protection. We could pursue that as as a as a permanent funding mechanism. That seems to be the one. I can send you, uh, there's some EPA. Guidance documents on creating these things and sources available. If you guys would be interested, I can send you some links. Send you some links to those.
Yeah, I'd I'd certainly be interested in seeing things.
Yeah, I think just to kind of cap on what you're saying, I think we first start with the list, the priorities list, the lumping. Start on that way. Then we can talk about funding mechanisms, bonding, even creative ideas. I think the next step really is like you put your head around it and then call on whoever you think can help you out. Start creating this list.
And I've got one for funding more things, but if you need a hand, get someone with you. We did, we did talk in that meeting last week. What Trish, Commissioner, yeah, we're at about. Funding a small stormwater staff department. One of the primary. Reasons for that is that. As development happens, we're getting a lot of private storm drainage improvements associated with private development and. The developers, once they're out, they're usually out and they turn it over to a homeowners association. The homeowners association may or may not know what they're getting into. Often they don't. Often it'll be fine for ten years. And so they'll say, well, I don't know, what are we charging all this? Monthly H O A fee for, you know, I have to do anything. And then they get a year like this and they're completely out of money and they can't address it. And those things aren't getting the maintenance that they need. We would like to maybe have some staff. That works sort of like code enforcement and actually does inspections on those, at least on an annual basis. And sends a letter and saying, you know, your your ponds, your stuff, your culverts need to be cleaned out, your ponds need to be cleaned out. You have sixty days to get this work done. Otherwise, we'll hire a contractor to come and do it and it'll be levied against your property as a fee. Most of our plat notes actually have that language in them now that actually says we can do that. But but that would be a way for a lot of this newer private development stuff that's not getting maintained the way that it should. But but that takes some staff time to oversee that and to enforce that. That's one thing we talked about. Another thing that we talked about that that person or persons could do is. Well. Contracting with having an on-call service to cover this was Bill's idea. This is a good idea. Having a contract with a firm. Provide those services like clean out our ponds has a lot to offer for it because. We can guarantee a relatively low minimum amount that we pay them and that they're paid on an hourly rate. And in a in a slow year, we don't spend very much money at all. We don't have staff. We don't have permanent staff and stuff. We don't have equipment that's sitting idle. And in a heavy year, you know, obviously, like this year, we might overspend what we normally budget, but it should come out in the wash and speed. I think that would be better avenue to pursue with limited staff that's more regulatory than having a contract. With with the earth moving, whatever, that stipulates the minimum. Response or response time, the equipment that they have to have on hand to be able to respond within X number of time. Money flow and put that contract out to bid because private people can iron fire much faster than the county can. Typically.
Understand. Yeah. That that's a great idea.
Yeah.
Very interesting.
How do we get it tomorrow?
Yeah, I'd like to come back real quick to that. Discussion of cleaning out those ponds and things a little bit. And I'm sure I know that we've discussed it a little bit before in here, but we've really also got to bring a Royal Crossing to the table. Because their ponds have filled up on the lower end of a Royal Crossing, which then has caused flooding all the way down Spanish Valley. And so even our treasurer is having to sandbag his property and his driveways. To keep a Royal Crossing's water off of his property. And then it ends up eventually it's Susie Taylor's. And it's totally washed hers out. She's one of the properties that I visited and had to go through. And it's it's extensive. It's it's not minor stuff. And so we've got to get them at the table to deal with some of this stuff.
They did do maintenance this last week. Um, I contacted them after the meeting and did some stuff. The next step I want to do is is have them put some outlet restrictors on their outlet things. There's a loophole in our county standards right now that basically says the minimum. Outlet size can't be any less than six inches as for clogging thing, but by the same token, si- six inches can still release a lot of water.
Lot of water.
So so I'm going to override that and have them restrict it down to like an R two inch. Or so the ponds at least fill that way before they, because right now it just flows through. I mean, it gets a little bit of backed up time.
It it's causing a lot of property damage downstream of them and that and that's an issue.
Yes.
It's an issue that homeowners shouldn't have to be dealing with from developers that haven't, as you say, done their maintenance or whatever because of a homeowners association. It isn't just them, it's others as well that are struggling with that. And then back to the contractor, I'll comment just a little background. I was part of the flood control in the Truckee Tahoe Basin, which is basically Reno. For a very long time, and I was present during the flood of ninety seven there. When the entire valley flooded and the casinos had sandbags around them that were four feet tall. I mean, the walls that they had to build to keep that water out of there. And it was extensive. And the result that came out of that. Was the contractors were given contracts and expected to be onsite at different bridges as we have in the city here. When the debris and stuff would collect, they'd just be sitting there with an excavator pulling everything out that was blocking that water to keep it flowing through and flowing down the river. And not just bridges, but other key areas to be able to keep that going. And it relieved the. Local government entities have happened to, as you say, have huge staff to provide that flood control. And so there were contracts put together and they had X amount of. You had to be there and onsite and ready to go within certain timeframe when else floods hit, but.
We do have a limited contract.
Yeah, I'd I'd like to, yes, get it, get the conversation kind of wrapped up. Um, definitely something that we'll be continuing to to talk about. Maybe a workshop at an upcoming meeting. All right. Any any last points to add before we do conclude the discussion?
I did I did hear, I was on Zoom, but I heard Citizen earlier talking about. What does it mean that the governor declared a flood disaster or whatever your money is available to private? Um, I had that question from a couple of homeowners too, and I've been sending them the quora.
Right.
I don't, I don't really know the answer to that. She did say that the ability to fund private stuff is fairly limited, but she was going to look into that a little bit more.
Okay. Thanks for following up on that, Dan. All right. Well, thank you guys so much for your time tonight. That was a that was a good, long discussion. And I think it was really helpful to, like I said, get the get the table set and. Kind of get us all thinking and and on the same page for sure.
Okay.
Yeah. All right. Have a have a good evening, guys. Thank you. Um, all right, we are on to our last discussion item, and that is our discussion of the Revenue and Taxation Interim. Uh, committee meeting that Kevin and I attended, me in person and Kevin virtually on, I think it was the twenty first. Of August, and I'll turn it over to Commissioner to Commissioner McCurdy as he is the one who put this on our agenda. Go ahead, Mike.
Three, three quick points. One, I did reach back out to you as a personal note. It's too heated in that moment to actually speak about it. I did take this personally, but I wish even tonight that I could have been thanked by a citizen. Uh, for attending and talking about the taxation meeting, uh, when they came up and spoke. Uh, I find it very. Inferiority, I'll go with the word. Uh, that. That's why my, you'll see my email in here, uh, said it left out, the subject title was simply left out. As a commission member, uh, felt very left out of that topic. Uh, specifically, I I felt out left out intentionally, uh, because my views differed. Uh, had I been. Had I been, uh. Informed, I would have been in that meeting also if it was a. Personal point of view, but. I I can't explain what was I expected as a commission, uh, as a commissioner to find out from the paper? That, uh. That Grant County was having representation at a meeting that I didn't even get to have a say in. Or a vote on. And felt very pointed at me. And I will felt pointed enough pointed enough that I know Bill wasn't there. I did pose the question. To I I posed the question to the the entirety of commission of who was there. I mean, the emails that are. Uh, of who was there and who knew. Uh, because I didn't know. Uh, I did know that you were driving up to Salt Lake that night in conversation, literally next to me at the end. Uh, I see that you, in the email, you did talk to Mary. Which she wasn't there, but you talked to Mary about it. I wanted to know if there was other commissioners that knew about this.
Who knew who was going up to Salt Lake.
But we were part of that conversation there.
So I.
One one second with that. Sorry. Uh, trying not to get heated because I I do feel left out and I feel like we're a team. We should be, we should be collaborating on most things and trying to work together on them. Uh, but this was obvious. If any reasonable person, a citizen right there, Doug at the paper, knew that this meeting was going on. Why didn't I as a commission? I I hate it now, not knowing this.
So Doug, I don't think Doug knew what was going on. He should, I mean, you you sent me that mail, email way before Doug had any contact with me. My my position is so, let me let me just read this. This is from our, uh, Grand County Policies and Procedures General. Thing. This is from B five. Council Communications accept as expressly permitted herein. Council members, including the officers, shall not speak for the council or for Grand County in written or verbal communication without specific prior approval from the council. At a lawful meeting unless the council has previously taken an official position on the matter. Council members are encouraged to delineate their personal opinions from the official positions of the council in the course of the discharge of their duties. Now, I'd highlight the unless the council has previously taken an official position on the matter, which has extensively been the case in this. I I read it as differently. I was, Kevin and I were expressly invited to this meeting. It wasn't put out to the commission. It wasn't put out to comm admin. Um, and I think there's a pretty significant reason that it was Kevin and I. I think I think they wanted to drag Kevin and I up to the meeting. And and interview us personally. I think I think the people who, um, you know, run the committee or whatever, obviously, the auditor. Uh, is aware of all the commissioners down here. And I think if they'd have wanted to hear from yourself or another commissioner, I think they would have expressly invited. You. I don't think you 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 weren't invited to the meeting. Honestly, it didn't really even occur to me to to bring it up because it was. Uh, Kevin and I who were invited to the to the meeting. I did talk to Mary about it a little before because Mary and I have been to. Uh, legislative sessions at least four times since we've been, since I've been on the commission. So. I felt a kindred with her talking about going in front of the legislature. It's also terrifying, honestly, to get hauled in front of the legislature. And and I was pretty nervous about it. And so, uh, when I talked to Mary about it, you know, we'd we'd been up there and talked before, especially during the diversification on T R T. Issue. So, you know, there's there's a, um, somebody who'd been through that with me before. And then as far as meetings go and being left out of meetings, we all attend plenty of meetings. Where where none of the other commissioners weigh in and and and, you know, we report on them, you know, as my intention to report on that at the meeting. Uh, I did so in an abbreviated form tonight just because obviously we're addressing it now. Um, but, uh. Again, I think I think that that was, um, clearly my, uh, that that's that's where I was coming from. Anyway, Kevin, you have your hand up first.
Yeah, I think Jacques says some things I was going to say. We we do have this policy that. You know, you should present it as your own views unless, you know, it's on something the commission has already discussed and taken a position on. And I think the issues around this audit are something we've already discussed extensively. I think we know very, very well what the majority of the commission thinks. You know, it's just contained in that letter and we discussed, didn't really go beyond that. I guess there was a thing about, you know, it'd be nice to have more flexibility and. T R T statute, but I think that's also been a longstanding position of Grand County and a position of almost every other county as well. There's been to act meetings where they talk about the need to, I think. So that that's a very mild contribution thing. So. I. I think we, you know, we stayed within the parameter, you know, well within the parameters of. Just representing positions that a majority of the commission has already spoken. I, you know, I could have. I I mean, I I think something else that, um. Influenced me is I I just think our discussions on the issues of order that's become a little bit unproductive. I think there's a lot of a lot of posturing. I feel like it for some people is getting wrapped up in the local election, but. I just think it's, you know, I'd rather spend more time talking about flood control or office buildings or, you know, how we're going to use zoning code, I think. Discussing the audit over and over again at every meeting just doesn't seem supportive.
I apologize that you feel that way. That doesn't make me feel good. I don't think that was at all the intent of Jacques or Kevin. You did see that the invite was to them. The only thing I wrote down was. Yeah, how would, what kind of processes you think government moves slow now? What processes would we put in place to know? Where where you go all the time, where I go all the ti- you know what I mean? We are all out and about at meetings, endless meetings. I rarely go anywhere outside of this county, but what processes would we put in place where we all have to check in? Am I allowed to do this? Am I allowed to say this? We just, it it would be so cumbersome. It'd be impossible. We are all delegated certain positions. You're on the rec board. I'm on the G W S A board. You know, that's, you know, we're representatives of the commission. And so that was the only thought that came to my mind, like, oh, my gosh, you know, we just couldn't all check in. I mean, I assume there's processes in place at a county level to be accountable to use money to travel. Um, but beyond that, you know, we don't know what meetings you're going to and what your what your position is. I don't know where you're going and what your position is. This to me was after seeing the email where I invited those two. I was like, okay, you know. I wasn't invited either, which is I'm just happy as a clam.
I.
But that's, that's all I have. That's that's the last thing I'll say. I I apologize that you feel that way.
I feel very. Informed on all of our meetings. Uh, I see most of our schedules for special service districts. And, uh, you know when I'm at the legislature because the legislature is open. And uh, you know when I'm at the legislature because the legislature is open. Come February, you'll know where I'll be at. Uh, but to be it did fill past. Uh, it, it does, did and does feel past uh accidental. Uh, in it, it, I know how it looks. Uh, me and Bill uh wrote a letter. It looks like it's coming from me and Bill. He was just another one that was left out. I, I'm if you were, this is even hard to say, uh, you were on the receiving of the left out too?
Or Evan.
Okay, you, Evan, on the receiving of the left out, Bill. Uh, Mary wasn't. How would it? Why is there not outcry from you? When you at first knew uh during, during your commissioner onboarding? When, Mike, you don't speak as the commission as the whole. Okay? I don't speak as the commission as a whole. I can't go to any of these meetings, be it not posted, be it posted, and act as Grand County Commission. I can only go and act as Mike McCurdy. Citizen Mike McCurdy. I am a commissioner, but I cannot speak on the whole entirety of the commission. In this meeting, it was obvious to people in our, in our county and office to another person, Doug, be it, he writes the paper. Uh, that Jacques and Kevin were speaking on the county as a whole, not Jacques and Kevin. I understand they have a personal say uh, uh, in, in meetings. I, I very much understand that. Uh, I am still Citizen McCurdy on top of Commissioner McCurdy, but you can't go and speak as the commission without note, uh, I mean, with, without notice on that. And I, I'm a little torn up. Uh, knowing the fact that like you're not mad at this as much as I'm mad at this because you know we can't speak as the commission. And others did.
I guess because we did have an official response that was passed as, as the majority of the commission to that audit. And so to me, they were speaking to that response. So I felt like we got to vote on it. I understand that you were not in the majority on that vote and that doesn't feel great, but so that's what, where I'm, I guess not here.
I, I mean, I think that's where, where B five comes in. I mean, clearly that um the unless the council has previously taken an official position on the matter, the council took an official position on that matter twice in the preceding months. Once when we signed as a county, the letter and, and the second time when we um failed to what was the vote taken on the, in the July, it was uh fail here to, we did not, the item that Bill put on the agenda about um recognizing the audit, we, we voted against that as well. So I, I think, I mean, there's clearly we've taken a stand on that. And I think that is exactly why Kevin and I were invited to that commission meeting because they wanted to ask us why and to speak to that. And that's, that's what we did. Go ahead, Kevin.
Um, yeah, I, again, you, you know, we can all speak for the commission if we stick to positions that the commission has endorsed. And this, and we probably could also say really obvious things like, you know, statute should be clear or you know, it'd be great if we had more money for flood mitigation. I, I, I wouldn't feel bad, you know, if I bumped into a state legislator saying Grant County would like more money for that, you know, that we have voted on. You know, that's a safe thing, but I wouldn't I wouldn't try to strike out beyond, beyond that. You know, I would, I would definitely feel like I'd done something wrong if I was representing saying Grant County wants this and I, and a majority of the commission didn't agree with me. That's, you know, that's where line is drawn. But I, it's in this letter that you mentioned, there is something in there that um really disturbs me, which is you re, you repeat this accusation from the au, from the management letter that Grant County engaged in, in quote intentional abuse of um of the statute, certainly it was deliberately violating law or something like that. I, you know, I don't see anything in the audit where there supports that. And that's a very, you know, destructive and um unlawful accusation to be making to a committee full of state legislators. And I just wonder if you might be interested in writing them again and saying, you know, e- either you should say specifically who you think did that intentional abuse or which things concentrated in this abuse, or it should be retracted because I think that's very damaging to the county. And, you know, you, you can't just throw accusations like that around.
I can throw that accusation around as Citizen McCurdy. I cannot as commission, speaking for the commission as Commissioner McCurdy. That's why at the top of the letter, I said I'm writing you personally. That we are writing in our-
But I, I guess my point is there, there's a list of things in the audit report and to me, I look at them and it's obvious that none of them are intentional. You seem, it sounds like you disagree with that. And I just think, you know, you're basically accusing county employees of deliberately violating the law. That's not cool, e- even as a citizen, I think especially a citizen who happens to be on the commission. So I don't, I don't think the fact that you put that at the top of the letter, you know, excuses that. I think you should say explicitly who you think was deliberately violating law or Bill can't do. I, I don't mean to give you a bill, I'm sorry. But um you know, I, I just, I just, I, to me, that, that definitely crosses the line. I, I, I think it's, it's really inappropriate and I, I think we could fix it with a follow-up email saying, well, we didn't mean this part or something like that. Or you know, maybe I'm overlooking something and there is a case where someone in the county has deliberately, you know, abused and violated these statutes, but you should say explicitly what it is. Yeah.
Was that email sent from your personal account or from your Grand County?
Sent from your Grand County.
Okay, well then I would refute that it was a personal email that came out of your commission email. Not to be, just, just-
Go ahead, Bill.
The audit clearly states that there was intentional misuse by Grand County. You, you can't refute that. It's in the audit. It's there plain and clear. You can argue it away if you want, but it also said that the tone at the top needs to change in Grand County and currently the tone at the top is five commissioners. That's why it came. I didn't write that letter from my personal. I wrote it from my commission. I support what Mike put in there. I agree with it. That there was intentional misuse. We've had battle after battle after battle over it. And you say that it's a political stunt. I don't see it as a political stunt. I see it as a misuse of taxpayers' dollars. And I am going to continue to work toward that. Now that's just my response to the conversation that we have going here because when we go back to the fact that the two of you went up and spoke to the state for Grand County and didn't notify other commissioners. At first I was just like, Mike, I was outraged. And then really, you know what it boils down to? I was disappointed in my leadership. I was extremely disappointed that you didn't bring the commission together and say that we have a meeting, we're gonna go up and this, what we're gonna say. And we'd have said, well, we'd like to, you know, go up there and we'd have given our opinion and asked you to represent us. You didn't allow us to be represented. You took it upon yourselves and Jacques, your email said that you were invited personally. Now you can break Mike down for not sending his from his personal email, but you said that you were sent up there personally or invited up. That's not the case. You introduced yourself as the Chair of Grand County. So my disappointment is in the leadership. It's, 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 it's disappointing that you think that you can have these meetings and you keep pointing to the fact about a commissioner that travels or you don't know what Bill Winfield's doing when he's up at the legislature. What I'm doing up there is I'm lobbying. I lobbied for money time and again. We talked about just a little bit earlier. Why don't we use more B and C road funds for flood mitigation? I was up there lobbying hard and got several million dollars worth of B and C road funds brought down here. That's what I do when I'm up at the state legislature. So you can question me. I'm not up there undermining you. I'm not up there speaking for you. I'm up there speaking for the constituents of this county when I'm up there. And it, it's frustrating and again disappointing in the leadership here. And there, there's, it's just an amazing thing. No one gave you that authority. Nobody. And you can say that there were previous votes on it, but you went up and had the meeting that you didn't have the authority to be at and it was intentional. You intentionally misled the commission. You intentionally misled the public and then you intentionally misled this legislative body. So yes, there was a letter sent out and some of it was very strong, but you intentionally did those things.
I completely disagree with you.
Well, I know that you do and that's why you went.
I, I, I think we, I, I absolutely represented to the city, citizens of this county as had been determined by a majority of this commission on, on at least two votes in a couple of months leading up to this. I, I-
This is bad government. This is bad government.
I don't know fantasy world you're living in.
I would like you to weigh in on this. That's what you're here for.
Way in on this, but this, this was wrong and it was inappropriate.
And when I say this- I think, Bill, I, I might agree with you. If we lived in a world where, say, the, you know, the Republican leadership and the state legislature goes up as the Congress is, Utah needs, you know, more control over federal lands or something about abortion. And, and then they bring in their Democratic colleagues and the Democratic colleagues, you know, testify, say, well, we disagree with that. Or they say, you know, it wasn't a unanimous vote until people agrees. That never happens. People understand that when people are speaking for a legislative body, it, it means a majority that um approves of what they're saying. It says, you know, policies and procedures. So, you know, you're, I don't understand why you think, you know, th- this is totally routine stuff.
It's not reaching. It's what? It's not reaching. You're out of the line. You represent somebody that you haven't come before the body to represent.
I think everything we said, majority, you know, pre, prior to us saying it, a majority of the commission proved it. I, I get the story. I, I don't see why you can't understand. Are you saying that the vote wasn't right?
Evan, you haven't weighed in yet.
I, I would just say that, you know, when, when I bore the burden of being the chair, um, I was often called up to the state, often on short notice to get called on the carpet and have fingers wagged at me and and I didn't know about this ahead of time, but I think that I agree a hundred percent that it had come before this body and been under numerous votes. And that's the kind of stuff that the chair has to deal with. And I think that that's what's spelled out in our bylaws and our rules and regs. And the fact that we're like talking about it again, it's, it's and, you know, you're criticizing the leadership. It just, it feels like political posturing and stunts and it's, it's uh, I think that that adds to the negativity of it a lot. And I think that, that to this point that um you know, continuing to underline that, that this was uh intentional misconduct or intentional abuse, like that's what I take personally, Mike. I mean, I've been here longer than anybody else sitting here and I was the one making those decisions. Those were completely in par with what we were hearing from citizens and, and, you know, uh, broad interpretations of what this could be used for. And you know, I will defend the, the flood relief grants. That was not some cynical decision. That was news stations coming down and saying that Moab's closed and we, you know, gave out tens of thousands of dollars to, to hotels and restaurants and we, you know, we're promoting that, that we were open for business and trying to attract that. And to continue to say like, no, that's wrong, that's wrong, that's wrong.
And it's intentional abuse, like-
Yeah, that's, that's not intentional abuse. That's trying to like drive the economy here. And I mean, I'm not gonna go back to Best Western or Arches Vacation Rentals or the Gonzo or Glorias and say, give us back those ten thousand dollars. Like each one of those guys get lots and lots of money. And, and it was to get this open so visitors would come. And that is, it's not some cynical thing. I was the one making those decisions as part of a board and we would vote, we would debate. And it's the same thing happening here. There's open debate. There's a vote. It's happening again and again. We're, we're voting on the same things. And this, this continuation to bring this same item up in the same sentence up over and over. Like, I feel attacked by that because I was the person that was sitting here weighing in on those. And so I completely understand that invitations come down from up north on short notice and people go to these meetings and usually it's a lot of finger wagging. You know, it's a lot of people complaining about what Grant County's doing down there. And I commend the Chair and the Vice Chair for weighing that burden and going up and, and having to, to listen to that. So thank you and I appreciate your leadership.
Stephen.
So I, I will admit when I heard about this, um, I was, I was disappointed. And, and here's why. Um, in July twenty twenty four, we, uh, it was posted in Times that we all agreed to postpone the acceptance of the, the audit findings, the recommendations. This was something that we were concerned about facing potential litigation. That was something that was raised to us and we met. We all had a conversation about it and we wanted to craft our best possible strategy and response. And, and I'll admit, I called Quinn and I called Gabe and I asked them if they knew about this. And before it happened, they both said, yeah. And I expressed my disappointment that they didn't share, they didn't share this with me either. And it's really frustrating and really difficult when we have an opportunity to go up to the state to be able to show our best foot forward. And the day before we have a meeting and everybody was at the meeting and we could have had a quick hey in, in your update, you could have let us know. And instead of gaining the valuable insight from different individuals, be it, you know, myself or different perspectives, we didn't have that opportunity. And that's what I'm frustrated at. I looked at the, um, I looked at the meeting. I listened to it. Um, I'm a stickler for rules. Um, I wasn't ecstatic about how there wasn't the disconnect. Normally when you give a presentation, you start off, you know, federal employees are the best at this. They say, hey, look, I work for the Department of Homeland Security. I am not speaking in my capacity as the Department of Homeland Security. You make it very distinct and separate. I think it was a missed opportunity. I think it showed a fractured um response. And I'm, I'm really, what I'm really disappointed is it wasn't a last minute response. Quinn's, you know, what Quinn indicated to me is that they contacted his office for uh Kevin and Jacques email as Chair and Vice Chair. And he pushed it out and didn't think anything more about giving out the emails. And the frustrating thing was it was a week and a day before the commission meeting, which meant that that was sufficient time to put it on the agenda. It was sufficient time to send out an email. Open rules have changed. There could have been an email that went out and, and discussed it. And that's where I'm, I'm, I'm just disappointed. I'm bummed. Um, through my time here at the county, it has been apparent that I don't have access and uh connections with the commissioners on a lot of topics. I get pulled in last minute. And it's, it's just frustrating. And so even when I look at this and try to give it the best, um, you know, the best glance, I'm disappointed because I think it was a trap. I, I think if Jacques doesn't think, you know, Jacques and Kevin, you know, don't think it was, I think it was a trap. You know, you have representatives on that board that are very hostile in the interest of Grand County. And to go up and not be prepared, not take the benefit of the wisdom of the attorney and different, different views, I think that's, that's a misstep. Um, I don't like being pulled into these conversations. I don't think it presents the best unified front for the commission. I think a phone call, an email or something could have addressed this, but we really have a, we have difficulty communicating on, on, through the commission at times. And I think that's healthy to admit it. And so-
Where do you think that difficulty began?
Where, on this particular issue or in general?
Just in general.
I think we have in this commission differing views. And I think because, because of those different views, I think it's really difficult at times that we don't come together when there are difficult opportunities to come together. Um, for example, like this, like this is a perfect example. It would have been, it's, it is the harder thing to do. The harder thing to do would have been to call up those that disagree with you, like Bill and Mike and said, hey, as leadership, we know, we know you guys have a different opinion to us, but we're going up, going up to, you know, in front of Republican centers. Mike, you're Republican, uh, you know, extend the olive branch and have that. I, I think that the hard thing is it's, it's the, the, the leadership has, you know, like my office, whenever any mistake happens in my office, it's my name on the door. It's my responsibility and I take that seriously. In court, if there's a mess up, it's my, my admission. I don't blame anybody else. And so do I think it's harder to communicate with people that disagree? Yes. But that's the position of the chair is to help lead that. And I know Jacques has tried very hard at that. I think that's something that he's stated is one of the things he wants to do well at. And I think you know, the commission would benefit from a retreat. It would benefit from sim team building. Uh, but we're so, there, there are people on the commission that are so diametrically opposed that it's gotten to the point where it's comical when a commissioner agrees with a different commissioner. I mean, that's how, and I, and we can laugh, we laugh about it, but that's also, that's probably- That's probably not government at its finest when when we have, you know, some some diametrically opposed. Now, I think. I think like a lot of things, like the candor and in the Supreme Court, not to go on a diatribe, uh, but. Collegiality, that's that's what we're missing on some of these things. So that's, you know, to answer your question, where where you think we've fallen through. So. That's that's all I I personally want to say on this.
Thanks, Stephen. Kevin, um. Yeah, I I think again, I mean, some of what she says, Stephen. Uh, I agree with, but we do have a pretty clear policy and procedures on this. You know, they, there's this audit report that contains the Grand County, you know, the the management letter and the Grand County letter. They wanted to hear about that. We stayed within the parameters of the letter, which had been discussed extensively, so. I just don't see where the problem is and I don't think discussing it further would have. Changed anything or, you know, been beneficial. I, you know, it's it's been already. Talked to death, but I did wanna, I I think, Bill, you said a moment ago that you thought there was intentional abuse. And I want to know, I would really like to know specifically which of these audit. Findings you think, you know, represent intentional abuse and I, maybe we can just go through them one by one. If anyone on the mission thinks this was intentional. Because I I'd like to, you know, I think the one thing we can all agree on after discussion is that there wasn't any intentional abuse. I think it'd be very powerful. Both you and Mike. You know, we contact the state legislature and others and say, you know, we've been here in Grant County. And maybe mistakes were made, you know, that we disagree on other things, but we all agree that none of this was intentional abuse.
I think you should start with Senator, not Senator, but Auditor John Dougal and ask him to resent those words and then that will give Mike and I the incentive.
That doesn't let you off the hook. Bill, you're right here. You're accusing.
Our words. They were given to us in an audit by experts.
Anyway, so continue with what I was saying. You know, the first binding is the sixty seven versus sixty three percent thing. That's a mistake that Gabe made. I don't think it was intentional. Do you either? You know. Please interrupt me if you think it was intentional.
I don't even understand where your points go in here. This conversation is one you should be having with the state auditor.
That's nonsense. You repeated, if you if you if you've been silent on that thing, fine. But, you know, you wrote to a bunch of state legislators saying there was intentional abuse, so now.
It went off of an expert's advice.
I I think I don't think you should throw around. It's just weird and rude, Bill. I don't know, but. You know, if you're gonna say people in this county in this room perhaps, you know, people like Evan five or six years ago or Gabe last year. Or other county employees or other elected officials are intentionally abusive law, you should be specific. You can't hide behind the auditor. That's ridiculous.
Not hiding behind anything.
Well, do you hide it because?
Let me let me give Mike a second. Mike's got his hand up for a while. It's possible, but it's okay. It's just there now.
I'm sorry, you you suggest.
You went up, you spoke about the audit. The decision was made. Two times previously. And that was made. To go up, talk about the decision that was made and then ask for more TRT flexibility. Decision wasn't made. Especially in that context where it was an obvious trap. It goes back. I don't speak the entirety of the count. By myself. I do speak. For the people who put me in this position. I don't want them left out. Or their representative left out. When you go to the state legislature and ask for more flexibility. On the rand.
I don't think there's anything random about that. I think we've discussed that many times. Do you think we should have less flexibility?
I think we should too. If the auditor asked and have standardized practices. You wanna pull a few hundred million dollars out from the general fund to pay back things from years ago? That are gonna come from property taxes or? I'm not in the position to even have the knowledge where that money came from. You're talking about. But I do know.
Couple hundred million.
I do. I I thought you were talking about a couple hundred million. That was. I don't know about a couple hundred million, but I do know I was left out of this conversation. That wasn't voted on. With the state. Even if it wasn't, even if it's not just about the audit, cool. You have left me and my constituent constituents out of the conversation of asking for more TRT less. TRT legislation from the TRT uh board, from the tax uh border taxation. Taxation interim committee. Uh, I forget the acronym, but. Never. Bring up new topics. Without the commission's backing. That goes that goes for me amongst all. That goes for Trish. That goes for everyone here. You, we don't speak for the entirety of the commission. By a few people unless there's a vote. A pub unless there's a public vote.
There had been two public votes in the previous couple of months.
About that, but not asking about more TRT flexibility. In the context of a, you have to speak about the audit and then ask for more during the audit. Couth comes in.
I think eventually we should start wrapping this up. I mean, we could sit here.
We could spend.
Squabble all night.
Okay, well, maybe I'll try to. Squeeze everything I have to say into into this one. Statement, but I I do think in support because I I am. You know, if I try to think, you know, what are some of the worst things that people have done, I think you're vague accusations. Some of their staff are really pretty bad. I mean, that I don't usually get, I'm, you know, I'm a pretty level headed person. I don't generally use my. Things like that, but I think this, you know, repeatedly saying in a vague way, you know, intentional abuse, intentional abuse. And not be willing to even say specifically what you think it is. Um, that that does make me kind of angry. I I think it's. I, you know, it's not, it's not illegal, I guess, but, you know, I. That's about the only good thing I can say about it. And so I I just want to go through. And see if, you know, if anyone disagrees, we've got, you know, sixty seven versus sixty three. I think very clearly an inadvertent error. No one's gonna say that that was intentional, I don't think. We've got. Um, the way the transition was handled where we asked the state auditor. You know, how do we do? How can we do this correctly? How can we do this correctly? The auditor says, ask your county attorney. We asked the county attorney and we did a survey and then later they said, no, that wasn't quite right. Should have done some of that stuff. That's not intentional abuse.
We we were all here for that conversation, including our, this was our current county attorney and we agreed on steps forward.
I don't think that can be, yeah, I'm looking for the intentional abuse in here. There's this, you know, classification of expenditures as terms of promotion. That was done out in the open. I can see how people might think it's a wrong decision. You know, the interpreting code, but intentional abuse, you know, we, before doing it, we asked, you know, the previous county attorney. Hey, can we do this? If so, please give us a memo just to find why. We got that memo. So we did it. That's not intentional abuse. Four out of five. I I think, you know, this this was an oversight. I I I'm, there's a few different things here, but one of them is as we were handling the transition. Around economic diversification. We forgot to change the way that directors salary. Now, maybe someone was thinking, ha, 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 you know, we're gonna get an extra twenty five thousand dollars in TMT money because no one's gonna notice that. Some percentage of this time should actually. Budget. But I I think it was inadvertent. I know, at least on my part, I don't know the budget committee. I, as much as anyone, I should probably should have caught that. I wish I had. I think you would have been right to to try to figure out how the top is allocated, but it got overlooked. We're doing other things in that department to come to compliance. Maybe wrong, maybe mistaken, not intentional. And finally, we've got the Grand Center where, you know, here there's just no motive. You know, we could, we've got these funds. We can use them to offset the general fund in like four different ways. You know, between like funding the airport. And we chose to do the Grand Center, which I still, I think is a justifiable decision. You know, so I don't, I don't think it's even abuse, but if it was abuse, I don't think it was intentional. So I just. Going through that list, I don't see anything that's intentional and it really, really, really irritates me when you say it is intentional. You can't hide behind the auditors. Well, the auditor said so. You're here in the county. You see how things work. You've got better, you know, you know more than the auditor does about these things. I think it would be very helpful if you would tell the rest of the world, hey, this is unintentional. People were here trying to file the law. So I get on your fight, both of you. Not sit up.
I'm not gonna sit here and justify your actions, whether they're intentional or not. That's your justification as you work through that list there. You're in no way going through that list and pointing out all the problems that were found in there. You're just simply saying your version of it and your opinion of it and the auditor had a different opinion. I'm not hiding. I'm not hiding behind him at all. I'm taking him for face value when he came down here and spent extensive time with Gabe. Working through these numbers. He didn't just dream this up and put this together and say, oh. This is a Republican or a Democrat thing, or this is progressive or conservative. That is, that isn't what they did. They spent a huge amount of time in our books and did a whole lot of good in my mind in helping to clean them up. And bring to light that there were some issues. I'm not hiding behind anything. I think that it's time that you admit. That there's some changes that need to take place and that a lot of those centered around you personally, probably. Because how many times have we heard citizens come in here and point out that you're the numbers expert? You have a PhD in numbers. We've been told that by one of the citizens we heard tonight. He's mentioned it before, so you can't. Hide behind the fact that you made a few mistakes and that you should have seen them. Yes, you're the numbers expert. We've been told that, but. What we also have been told is that there's some implementations that we could put into effect. And that's what I would have liked to have heard out of my chair when he spoke up there, that there are some things that we could correct. And we're gonna try and work on them rather than, boy, we really think that you'd ought to loosen it up some more. I I'm totally in disagreement with that. I thought. When Jacques took the stand, I thought he did a very good job. He was very presentable. He was very polite. He was very amenable. But he didn't have the authority of the body behind him and he spoke out of turn for what some of us thought that should have been said on that stand. And that's what this meeting is about. That's really what this is about. Notify us and we'll support you and ask you to use our point of view also when you go up there. That's all I'm asking for.
Again, um, I I mean, when I say I was personally invited, I don't mean personally, like as a citizen. We were invited at our Grand County address. Obviously, Quinn was asked for our commission addresses. Who were invited as commissioners and and I think they specifically wanted to invite Kevin and I. Um, and and again. I'd state that I felt like I was on very solid ground speaking for the commission as we'd already discussed this at at many commission meetings. I I was actually shocked when I got Mike's email and I I literally got out of the car and got the email like. Like probably five hours after I spoke up there. Um, I was surprised. I answered, I answered. Like, oh, he must not understand. So I answered the email and then and then he didn't post previous follow up emails that he. Uh, sent out, but it became very obvious to me that that. Anything I said at that point in the email would probably be used against me, so I elected to call him right away and and. Talked to him. Um, he didn't take my phone call. That's fine. Totally is prerogative. But, um, but yeah, as far as that meeting goes, I I I don't know. I don't know what else to say. I think I think that was.
I think we're just asking that you include us in the message going forward. That's all we're asking.
What are you asking for?
Entirety of the commission.
I, I think this commission's functioning like pretty much every other legislative body in the state. We discuss things. We have votes. Majority prevails. That's that's what's going on here and I don't understand why you guys are getting so bent out of shape, you know, that you're in the minority and. You know, you didn't get to write that audit response letter. I also, I I I do think, Bill, you were definitely hiding behind the auditor report. It's disappointing, but, you know, maybe an analogy will help you understand. You know, I could say, you know, Stephen, I'm sorry to take on you, Stephen. I'm just using your example instead of pointing at Bill that, you know, someone in your office is speaking awful things to the press. Stephen would be very reasonable, say, oh, really? Well, who? Why do you think this? Someone else said, someone else said it. I'm not gonna get specific, but you have problems in your office. You know, if I'm gonna accuse Stephen of of something, I need to be specific and back it up. And you're accusing county employees of or or elected officials of deliberately disobeying the law. But you're you're unwilling to say what which law when, you know, where it happened. That that seems kind of strange to me.
It's outside of this discussion.
Yeah, I, yeah, uh. I'm good with this discussion. I, we've we've discussed it many times. We can bring it back if anybody wants to bring it back to another time, but. Um, I'm ready to call it meeting.
I wonder whether we should have this topic on the agenda for every meeting. This is a standing agenda item.
This is open discussion?
I'm poking fun at you guys for bringing it up over and over.
All right, can I make one?
Yeah, Quinn, go ahead.
The governing policies and procedures do say, and I and I realize this was a phone call, it was a verbal phone call that we received that asked for. The Chair and the Vice Chair's emails. The governing policies and procedures do instruct the administrative staff to forward individual emails to the individual commissioners. That received them and not the entire commission as a whole. So if you guys want to change that, you gotta change it. Because as of now, if Bill or Evan get an email that comes to comment and says, please forward this to that individual commissioner, that's all we're forwarding it to. Because that's in the governing rules and procedures. So if you want that changed and you want us to start forwarding everything to everybody, we gotta change the policies and procedures.
I don't think we have any problem whatsoever with what you did. That was never intended, conceived, construed, so hopefully it wasn't taken that way.
Okay, I'm gonna end this discussion and with that, we have come to the end of our meeting at eight oh five. So I will adjourn the September third Grand County Commission meeting. Thanks.